We're meeting a little earlier today at 6:00 PM. We are meeting in a hybrid format to allow for safe public participation and remote access on BEFCAM, so we want to thank BEFCAM for their support. On June 16th, 2021, with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, which were twice extended and now further extended through March, and we continue to use this forum, we are granted provisions to allow for the remote holding of meetings where the quorum and a chair are physically present. It asks our body to use technological methods to allow for this public access. And as a note, Beverly has prior approval for remote participation of members, although through that permission, the chair and the quorum won't be physically present when this act and its extensions expire. With that, I would like to conduct a roll call to make sure everyone can hear who's online remotely and those who are in the room. So bear with me because we have a very long list. Okay, so for our school committee, all right, so we have tonight Ms. Karen Robinson.
Here.
We have Ms. Rachel A. Bell.
I'm present.
I'm Dr. Knaa McKenzie, present. We also have, I'm trying to see who's online, but I can't. So if we can get some support with the online windows.
Sure, we have our resident rep Katie Kraft with us online.
Here.
Great, and we also have our resident rep Ryan Redmond online.
Present.
Great, the other online members are just us at the table being able to present. Oh, Derek Brennan, he was here. There he is.
Yes, I'm also present.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay, and in person, we have Casey Fiore.
Here.
We have Dr. Sue Trocheck.
Here.
Dr. Sue Flaherty.
Here.
Sorry, Dr. Dot Flaherty. I'm just blending, merging the two of you in perpetuity. And is there anyone else I need to add to roles? Oh, Sadie, I'm sorry, I couldn't see you at the end there.
Present.
Thank you. Anyone else I likely forgot? No, okay. So we have others that we need to call on the roll that may be absent, that are not on screen or in person. Okay, all right, with that, thank you so much for allowing us to do the roll. Next, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask Ms. Robinson if you can lead us in that.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, merciful, and just as for all.
Thank you so much, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Flaherty.
We have a very full agenda. With the meeting being canceled in May, we do have some activities and items that we need to make sure that we cover before we all disperse for the summer. So we will, in a few moments, vote on minutes. We will hear updates from our student reps. We have our middle school and high school librarians and media specialists here to talk about summer reading. We also have an update for elementary summer reading. We will go through the handbook changes, which will require a vote. The principals are all here this evening to give updates on their school improvement plans, which just need to be received and then shared with the school committee. And then we do have some curriculum approvals as far as making recommendations to move on to the school committee, which Dr. Trocheck will do if they're supported at the next meeting. And then we had one policy still that we had not adopted, and so we will be bringing that forward so that we can make sure we're up to date with everything that we had wanted to tackle this year. So our first item is for an approval of the minutes of April 9th. You receive those, and they're also linked. You should have all received a copy of the slides this evening because there's a lot of information if you want to be able to look along.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting records from our Wednesday, April 9th Curriculum Instruction and Student Life meeting.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded, could we call a roll?
Rachel A. Bell?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
I'm Dr. Knaa McKenzie, yes. And I know that Casey, you're non-voting, but I'm gonna call on you anyway. Can you just say present?
Thank you, present.
And then the folks online, do we have folks that we need to call?
Yeah, there's Katie Kraft.
Yes.
And Ryan Redmond.
Yes.
And Derek Brennan.
Yes.
And Sadie, I don't think you were at the last meeting.
So abstain.
Abstain.
Okay. Okay, the motion carries, thank you very much. This is something that we would have done at our May meeting, and so we just want to take a moment, and you can see the long list, and then also we tried to put a thank you in for each of them. But we always say that it takes a village or a whole team, and I think that when we look at all of the appreciation days that happened between April and May, and we do this slide, it really stands out about how many people we need to thank and how every single member of our community really helps to make the whole year a successful one. And so we just wanted to take a moment to recognize all of the different appreciation days that happened throughout April and May. They range from our school lunch heroes and crossing guards and school bus drivers to our teachers, to our principals, to our nurses, our counselors. And so we thank every single one of them that plays a role and an important vital part of our team to make sure that our students get what they need each and every day that they come to school. And now Sadie, I would like to ask you to give your update, and thank you for being here. We know what a busy time of year this is, and you were busy at graduation this weekend and finals, so thank you very much for being here.
Of course, so as she said, it's a very busy time, especially at the high school. So going back a little bit, the seniors had their reach fair a few weeks ago now where they got to set up stations in the BHS gymnasium, and students, staff, anyone really in the community that wanted to come and look at the projects that the seniors had done to display what they had done for their internship or reach project in general could come and view it. So these projects are meant to help students sort of get a foot in the door and kind of understand better what they want to do with their lives and their careers, or maybe just exercise a passion of theirs that they discovered during high school. So some people do murals, and some people volunteer here at the middle school or even at the elementary schools, and it's a really great opportunity for our seniors. And then just last Sunday, the seniors, the class of 2025, did graduate. It was a beautiful day. Finals start next week for the high schoolers, marking the last week of school for us. Softball has come to an end, all spring sports did, but I highlight softball because they won the Northeastern Conference this year, which is very exciting. The music department had their end-of-the-year concert and banquet just last night, marking the end of their season as well, so a lot of exciting end-of-the-year celebrations at the high school.
Lots of great celebrations. I was with the band last night, so that was a lot of fun. And Coach Sudak is in our office, so we hear about the softball team every morning.
Yes.
Thank you, and I don't believe we had any students online. This is a busy time of the year. We do have a little gift for all of our community and teacher and student reps, and so I'm gonna ask you which you prefer because I know you might need to leave before the end of the meeting to study. So we have Atomic Cafe or Dairy Queen?
I'll take the Atomic Cafe. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, of course.
And we're also joined online by Dr. Andre Morgan.
At this time, I'd like to invite Barb Vecto and Alex Woznick up to the podium to talk to us about summer reading.
Only got five minutes, I don't even need to sit. All right, I'll just give those to you and you can pass. So in the past, we've come to talk about summer reading, and we've brought a pile of books and a bunch of stuff, you know, so everybody can see it. But thanks to Paul Casey, who's the Humanities Director, he okayed the list upfront, so it's all, it's a done deal. I've talked, today was my last day of doing summer reading book talks here at the middle school, and it's a good list this year. Again, as we did last year, we're also using the Mass Teen Choice Book Award nominees, so students can read those books. I book talk them, and then I chose 13 other books. These are three of the ones that I chose. What I try to do with the books that I chose that Paul Casey and also Katie Nelson from the Public Library helped choose, I try to find books that are written for adults that have teen appeal or graphic novels that kids might like, things that have, you know, an activity base. The Mass Teen Choice books are great, but they're almost all fiction books written for teens, so I want to give a little bit of extra, you know, a little bit of extra types of books there. The other thing is that, sorry, I've just zoned. Oh my goodness, I have been focusing a lot on letting kids know that they are allowed to read whatever they want. They do not have to read something off of the books that I tell them about or the Teen Choice books. They can read whatever they want. With the ninth graders, I say, please email me or talk to Ms. Woznick to get it approved because, you know, they haven't been reading, I don't know them that well. But with the high school kids, I say, just, you know, read anything, just read, for the love of God, read. I'm also focusing on the reason that we do summer reading, and I found a study from the University of Sussex that talks about anxiety and stress and different activities that can reduce them. So if you just would blow through these slides, the first one's taking a walk, which is, I think, 42% on the average, lowers stress 42%. Your morning dunks will lower your stress 54%. Listening to music will lower your stress 61%. And then this one, reading a book reduces stress on average. So not everyone thinks of themselves as a reader, and yet those who have used this as a stress relief sort of activity have found that 68% of them have had reduced stress, or 68% of their stress is reduced in this study. So, and I think that that has kind of an impact on the kids. I have been telling them, you know, it's not, if you learn something, great, that's a side effect of reading. If you learn to be better, another great side effect of reading. But really, we're trying to teach them the skill of reading, reading something that makes them feel better, that takes them out of themselves, that lets them, you know, experience things that they wouldn't be able to experience. And one of the things that I'm finding, and one of the things that we're hoping to do with this opening it up for kids to be able to choose their own books more, is that the kids don't, and I hate to beat a dead horse, and please forgive me, because we don't have librarians in the elementary schools, a lot, many kids, their parents take them to the public library, they learn how to pick books, they learn how to find books that interest them. But a lot of the kids that I'm seeing, even at the high school, don't know what they like because they've never had anyone tell them the process of how do you find something you like? How do you, you know, how do you explore different types of books and find out if you're in fact a reader? So the process is pretty much the same as it's always been. If you want to go two or three more slides, those are the, oh, one back. Those are the Mass Teen Choice books. There, I was on the committee, so I did help choose them. I haven't read them all yet, but the ones that I've read are tremendous. And the other ones, you kind of have to blow through the whole thing to show all of them, but I've passed a few around in case people are interested, and I think it's gonna be a really good program this year. Katie Nelson from the Public Library came this, earlier this week, I think it was last, it was last week. Anyway, she came and we did a book fair, not even close to the amount of book fair mojo that's here, but we did a public library free book fair, and she brought all of the summer reading titles in stacks, and we camped out by the cafeteria, and kids came by and were able to take books out, and we were able to sign up about a dozen kids with new library cards who hadn't had library cards before. And so kids were able to take books home, which was, which was really gratifying. And she's just, the Public Library has been so helpful with this process, as they, as they are every year. We're gonna do the summer reading art show again this fall, so mark it on your, do we have the date, Alex?
I don't remember what it is. Do we have the date?
It's early October.
I'll look it up while you're talking.
Mark your calendars now because that's always a great party. So, Alex, you're up.
Okay.
Great. I'm gonna make this a little higher. Okay, thank you. And I think I'm gonna, I also don't want to go over, I know it's a busy time, so I'm actually going to run a thing so I know I'm not talking forever. Okay, so basically, summer reading, I just sent you guys a flyer, step by step. They have to pick a book off of a list that we give them, do a response, and then read a graphic novel. By having them read both a graphic novel and a book off of a list that doesn't include graphic novels, it says to them, graphic novels are wonderful, we think you should read them, however, you should also read, you know, chapter book type things. So the 5-6 list is taken from the Mass Children's Book Award list, which comes out in May. So as those finalists come out, so that, we use, we've been using that list the last few years for the 5-6 kids, the kids going to 7 and 8. I make the list, this year there's 21 books on the list. And so, yeah, they're supposed to read one book from the list, do a response project. I did update the response projects a little bit because of AI, so some of them were a little too easy to do with AI, so I kind of switched things up a little bit with those. But the main thing that I kind of wanted to talk about is a little bit what Barb was just doing, is some of the questions that I answer for kids at the end, and I've found my questions that I, my FAQs have gotten really good because I have fewer and fewer questions at the end because I've already answered them. And the first big one that the kids always ask is, why should I read in the summer? So here's what I tell them. Number one, it's fun, cheap entertainment, lots of fun things to do in the summer, require somebody to drive you somewhere, or buy something expensive, or find a friend to do it with. You can just do it at home, by yourself, anytime. It's even free if you get the books from the library. And it's also something I look forward to, and I always make a point of saying, like, and I bet your teacher is looking forward to look at reading books this summer, and they're like, yes, because we don't have to like prep, prepare things for school the next day, we don't have homework all summer. Another big thing is I tell them it keeps your brain in shape. I'm like, if you're, if I'm looking at sixth graders, I'm like, do you want to show up with a seventh grade brain in the fall? You need to read. Like, if you are gonna go out for cross-country in the fall and you spend the whole summer laying on the couch, you are not gonna have a good cross-country season, you're gonna be just barely kind of getting going at the end of the season. And that's what happens if you don't read or do some other things that really engage your brain over the summer. It's this summer learning loss thing, and it's real. So, you know, if you want to show up in the fall, like, ready to go and ready to learn and not like lose all that stuff that you did the last term, pretty much, you should be reading a little bit in the summer. Another point, this is really similar to Barb's, is it makes you calmer and nicer. There are scientific studies that show that people who read fiction are more empathetic, and empathetic people are nicer people. And I'm like, we can't all be the number one student, we can't all be the number one athlete, we can all be nicer people, so let's make that a goal. And it does calm you down. I'm like, there's so many things we do in this life that make people, you know, that jazz you up, like, sometimes in a fun way, sometimes not in a great way, and reading is a great de-stresser. It's a great thing to do at night when you're getting ready for bed, or just to wind down at the end of the day, or something like that. No technology needed. When your parents are like, get off that device, you're like, oh, I can read a book. Or if you're going somewhere where you don't have to worry about chargers and losing expensive devices, like, bring a book along. It is part of your ELI grade in the fall. I grade all the summer reading projects. Barb grades the ones for the high school, and then I give the grades to the teachers, and they enter them into Aspen. So if you want to start off with an A, and if you want to start off on the right foot, making the right impression, you know, that is something that speaks to some kids. And also, the one that they all like is you can win prizes. I don't give out the prizes, but I was lucky this year to be able to sync up a lot with Katie Nelson, who's our teen librarian at the Public Library, and she came and presented all the, like, she's got amazing stuff planned this summer. She has gone all out. So the summer reading program at the Public Library is great, and part of the way you can win prizes, some of the things you have to do are reading books. I'm like, if you're gonna read books anyway for school, like, check it off and you might be able to win some prizes. Kids ask, what if I don't have time? I'm like, I counted, summer vacation is 70 days, that is 10 weeks. You have time, I'm not accepting that, but I will accept that you need to think about and plan your time a little bit. I need to plan my time if I'm gonna make time to read. The kids ask, why do we have a list? And I say, it builds community because we're all reading off of the same list. You're, in the fall, you and your friends are gonna be, the kids on your new team are gonna talk about the same books together, you and your new teachers are gonna talk about some of them. And also frankly, sometimes too much choice is hard, and I think that's really true for middle school kids. Other choices, they can pick off the adjacent grade list, so if you're going to 7, 8, you can pick off the 5-6 list. If you're going into, if you're going to 8th grade, you can pick off the high school list, and I have a list of books that are more kind of middle school friendly, so they can do that. Audio books are great. I tell them a great thing to do is listen to it in the car with your family if you're going on a road trip, listen to an audiobook when you're reading, it really helps reinforce your reading skills. And just check in with a teacher or a parent if you're not sure about what is a good choice. And what if I forget all this information? It's a lot. The summer reading website, I put a ton of information in there, so everything's in there, so if they forget anything, it's all there, and there's handouts in the office here, and there's handouts that are at the Public Library, so no excuses. No, I don't have time, I don't know what to do, I don't know where to get the book, any of that stuff, like, here it is. So, anyway, yeah.
We have a great slide later on that says that in order to prevent learning loss over the summer, you need to be doing academic work, reading, math, two to three hours a week.
Yeah, yeah, it makes a huge difference, yeah. So anyway, thank you.
I'm happy to know.
And I went over by a minute, sorry.
When the kids ask, I always tell them my favorite thing for summer is the four Bs: a buddy, a book, a beach, and a beverage, which is usually my iced coffee from Dunkin's. So I got two of the four that you mentioned.
Right there, take a walk and you're all set.
Thank you very much, this is always exciting when we start to talk about summer reading, and then we also have the library on here as well, because that's what the elementary's doing, and I have the teen challenges so that everybody could know what's available at the library, so.
And while you're in the room too, like, I do have, some of the tables over there have a bunch of the summer reading books. So if you want to actually physically see some of them, we, we're not gonna pass them around, but you can see the middle school ones over there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good night. For elementary summer reading, they hook up with the library, the Public Library, and the public librarian has been out at all of the elementary schools to talk about the program. For them, they need to read 12 hours between June 17th and August 6th. They have some reading logs that they need to fill out, but they also have an amazing amount of activities. And as Alex was mentioning, that they can win prizes, Topsfield Fair, raffle tickets, there's $50 gift cards, and that's all done right on if you sign up for the teen challenges through the Public Library. Any questions about summer reading? Okay, we're going to move on to our district, to our proposed changes to our handbooks. We do have a district proposed edition that would go into each of the three handbooks, and I believe Andre is here, and we'll discuss that in a moment. And then we did a, two of our principals worked with the other principals and did a comprehensive review of our elementary handbook, which has not been done in depth for a few years, and so they will go through that list. And then we have just a few minor changes at the middle school and a pretty significant list for the high school that Mr. Thomas will talk about.
Many thanks, Dr. Flaherty, and good afternoon to everyone. The first change we're proposing to our district handbook, can everyone give me a minute?
Yes, it's great.
Is around obscenities and profanities, and so this is our life. Obscenity and profanity have become significant issues, and many, and schools just collectively must get to the handbook. Profanity and slurs have become really problematic in recent years with students using words that are completely unacceptable in schools. And sadly, students are beginning to use these, this kind of language at younger ages. And so it's important for us to have language in our handbooks to help deter students from being profan and or obscene. And we're proposing the inclusion of this section in our elementary, middle, and high school handbooks that address the femitorial language. What we, the slide that is being shown now is the actual language that we want to include in our handbook, and so it gives a little bit of an overview around the language, gives some guidance in terms of what the terminology, the offensive terminology in slurs may include in what they're directed towards along with some of our specific examples. These, we've identified specific places where these would go in each of the handbooks, and we trust that including this, this language in the handbook will help deter some of the language that our schools are experiencing.
Are there any questions for Dr. Morgan?
Dr. Flaherty, I don't know if we take questions on this in isolation or after all of the handbook changes. I give, present.
I'm gonna ask at the end of each section, but then we'll do one vote at that end because this would go into all three handbooks.
This would go into all three handbooks. Okay. All right, I'm gonna ask Ms. Hart and Ms. Twombly to come up and talk about the proposed changes for the elementary handbooks. You did receive, we sent this out in your packet, so you should have been able to see in each of the handbooks, if you scrolled through, you saw exactly where the language would be, it was highlighted, or had a strike through if it was gonna be deleted, and so they're gonna just do the summary kind of overview tonight.
Highlights, yeah, thank you. So we did a review of the whole handbook there, as you see in the first bullet, there's some just kind of general edits throughout to update wording, names, et cetera, titles. We went through and updated any of the kind of policies that refer to things like emergency cards, we no longer have paper emergency cards, we're doing it through Aspen, so we just kind of updated some of those more like technical pieces such as on the first few. We did update the language around our homework policy, giving a little bit more kind of developmentally appropriate language to that, but also giving some autonomy to the schools to kind of look at that individually based on their student populations. In, on page 10, looking at our school crisis team, we've worked as a district in length as of, you know, this year, really reexamining and through our safety committee, you know, what kind of is going on at each of the schools and finding those kind of, you know, putting some of that in there so that that's reflected within our handbook. As you all know, we had an updated food services and universal free school policy that was adopted by the school committee, so adding that and replacing some of the language around paying for lunches and how to apply for those processes, so Christina Lille worked with us to update those. We updated some of the technology and website and electronic device language to fit the needs and operational needs of 2025. I don't think many of our elementary school students are carrying a pager anymore, so, you know, taking that out and replacing it with smartwatches and being a little bit more specific about how we handle that, very much in alignment with how the middle school is addressing it, minus the lockers. Updating the, or adding rather, and adopting the BMS digital etiquette piece from their handbook, just kind of copying it and bringing it over. We see that students, especially in grade four, have more access to digital media, and we felt that that was important, given just how we see it come into our schools. Striking Title I because that has shifted to BMS. Updating the elementary fine arts and instrumental to meet kind of the current policies of strings falling in grade four. We also updated or added the, under the attendance policy, to include kind of the work that's developed out of our Beverly Community Connections work around really getting to kind of the heart of an attendance issue in an elementary school, whereas we have much more parental involvement, I think, at some levels. And partnering with families, have inviting families in and really including kind of an attendance review meeting to sit and partner with families to seek out whatever community wraparound supports will help them get their students to school is an essential piece of what we're doing at the elementary level. We consulted with Jody Elder and Dr. Cheryl Silva to update our headlights policy. So, redacting that and kind of getting that updated to meet kind of current best practice as recommended by the Academy of Pediatrics. We struck the bicycle. You must register your bicycle at the front office.
Yes.
We have a lot of kid, we have Safe Routes to Beverly at schools is something that we, you know, encourage and have a lot of kids that will bring their bikes. And we're handling safety through things like our partnerships with Mass DOT, doing, you know, helmet safety. We just had a visit from them. I don't know, safety training with the fourth grade. So, thinking about how we can do that with our students versus having it more formally kind of registered. And also, I think most importantly, page 42, you'll notice in the handbook, really thinking about our discipline policy and updating it and aligning it with really the initiatives and the current best practice that we're using around restorative practices and responsive classroom where that wasn't reflected before. So, that's where those fall.
Thank you. Any questions for our elementary?
I think I'm going to pose my question that I had a little bit earlier since I have two principals here. Are we finding now that we have a digital version of the handbook that it's being read more or even less than when we used to have a physical copy and we physically had them sign a receipt? Because now it's just a click box in Aspen.
That is a great question.
Yeah. I would say probably about the same. I think some families that know to look for a handbook and are seeking out that can easily locate it and access it. But I don't know that it's something that is often, you know, read with fidelity as they are acknowledging it. So, I think one thing that we've talked about is in the beginning of the year, really thinking about what are those policies and procedures that we want to lift out in relation to our behavioral school matrices and kind of highlight for families so that they know like, hey, this is how we, how we do this here and this is why. So, I think that some of our kind of more closely connected family connections are much more well-read than the actual policy handbook, if I'm being honest.
Thank you. Isabel, I will add, we can't guarantee that they're actually reading it, right? When they click off the box. But by moving to the digital piece, we can now track everybody that has at least acknowledged that they've seen it and read it. And this year, we've had our highest return of that with the work of the front offices and the technology department than we've ever had. And in fact, I believe it's Hannah reached 100% return rate. So, which is amazing. Any other questions? Dr. Kendee McKenzie.
Right. Could be at the end, but quick question. As I'm looking at this, the other language with regard to terms we don't want students to use will be inserted in all of the handbooks. But I'm thinking that the disciplinary policy by school level will be different in each handbook.
Correct.
Since there is a Director for Restorative Practice, however, does that somehow update our policies with regard to the middle school and how that might be updated? Or is that still relatively the same? I don't know how that would impact what we do on, at discussion.
There was a lot of updating to the middle school handbook last year because that was a new position. They have minimal proposed changes this year, but that's also something they can go back and look at. And one of the nice things is, is that because it's digital, we can update it in live time. And we don't have to say, we have to wait a whole year because we can't afford to reprint 1,000 handbooks. So, that could be something that Lisa looks at in her handbook and just make sure that it reads, the discipline reads the way it should in the restorative practices piece.
Thanks.
That's, that's helpful. We did in last year. But it is, Andre's part is in the discipline. It's going in all of them in the discipline.
Okay. Yeah, just unfortunately, I am familiar with some more language issues coming up in this last year. And that seemed to be one of the places where restorative practices might have been applied more frequently. So, I'm just wondering if that, if there was a correlation there somehow and if we were.
Yeah, and that was one discussion we had with Dr. Morgan about you can't make a list of every single term that might come up. And so, that's why those were given as examples, but clearly states this may not be the only language that comes up.
And, and within the, so the edits that are in the slide, the slide before this, there are multiple places where language is being changed within. So, it does go right into the discipline, you know, the infraction areas where it goes. And he's made certain to kind of insert them in those places. So, it does update those at both the elementary, middle, and high school levels.
Any other questions? I thank the two of you for all the technical work in changing this. And thank your colleagues for working with you to update the elementary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recommendations. And now, I'd like Ms. Oliver to come talk about the handbook changes proposed for the middle school.
So, as Dr. Flaherty said.
Mic on.
As Dr. Flaherty said, we had changes last year. So, we have minimal changes this upcoming year. You can see, just like elementary, we have some general information that will be updated throughout the handbook. Names, everything that the district is proposing. But the one area that we did highlight is on page five of the handbook, and it is around math placement. Honestly, you probably should have caught this last year, but it is the, what is no longer available in the handbook is saying that we give a specific placement test for math. Instead, at this point, we're looking at multiple data points as we're looking at accelerated math, both in grade seven and grade eight. So, we are looking at MCAS data. We're looking at the yearly benchmark data. And we're also looking at teacher recommendations. So, that language has been changed to have multiple data points for math placement in our accelerated courses.
Any questions from Ms. Oliver on the middle school changes?
Thank you. Thanks.
Evening, everyone. Okay. I wish mine was as brief as Ms. Oliver's, but it's not that bad. So, I hope you all got my kind of checklist edit sheet here. To start, we, we did add in some language around artificial intelligence. And my teacher committee that did a great job this year working through that, instead of developing policy, which we have in place right now that we use within, on the classroom level, they developed a mission statement, which is more of our views on what artificial intelligence means to us as a school from a teacher perspective, a student perspective, and from an academic integrity perspective. So, it outlines that. And we've left that, the piece around within each teacher to identify within their core syllabus what their policy is. But in general, across the school, we use kind of the stoplight analogy, which is pretty common among schools right now. And that's, that's worked pretty well for us, you know, throughout the year. So, that's, that's kind, that's where the mission statement comes from. I'll back up one sec. There's a lot of general edits, just updating websites, dates, stuff like that. So, I'm not going to highlight all those. I wouldn't do that to you. So, next on our list is around electronic devices. We had, we had a new cellphone policy last year. It was just firming up that language to include the overall, really, the old language was the classroom teacher determine the policy. We've, we've made, made it much more uniform across the school. So, just changed that language there and then just updated some, some wording around that. Next on page 1617 is around our learning expectations and grades. This, this again was more about cleaning up some language around what was about our summatives and what our summative retake policy is. So, it was defaulted before to the teacher outlining it within each assignment. We've, we've changed that a little bit to the teacher outlines that within their syllabus. So, it's a little more uniform, a little more out there to families. So, it's a little, it's more clear to them as they go through the course with the teacher. And then, a little bit of language around missed assignments and grading assignments. But all, all things that were kind of in a practice with us and we put the wording in place to support that. Next is around our advisory. And that just talks about, we had, we had a piece in there that described our flex advisory as an additional pilot piece. This is actually just taking that language and putting it in as its own category. And it just describes what a home advisory and flex advisory is. So, those, that's nothing new. We've had that for, this is the second year of using that, that program. And then, if I go down to the next, it's some policy around, or some talk about absences. And that was just making some changes on times and what constitutes a full day based on the, the new time of the school day next year. So, moving the start of our day up to 8:05. What half a day means, which counts for us as far as eligibility for extracurriculars. So, just changing the timing of that and just adjusting the time based on the block, so. And we have a piece around, again, truancy, which is, again, the minutes in the period. It was, it was very detailed about the amount of time in the period. So, we, we just adjusted that for the, for the new schedule for next year. We updated some language on backpacks. For us, there was, this is going back to when we were moved into the new school. There was talk about different types of backpacks, like drawstring backpacks, that type of thing. Students are wearing pretty traditional backpacks and carrying them around with them, you know. And they, they kind of carry their whole life with them in there and don't use the lockers a ton. But, so it's, it's kind of, it's kind of changed how we operate. So, just updating that piece. The, there was a potential change around smoking and vaping and the policy around that. That's, I know there, that's coming through later tonight. So, when that's through, we'll, we'll update that piece in our handbook. Going down to evacuation and lockdown procedure. We've, we've changed the protocol that we use, using the I love you guys protocol away from Alice. So, just updating that language and changing that language and spelling out the verbiage that we use within that. And my final one, and I'm just going to go down to it. Sorry, thank you. So, for this piece, our, there was language around transgender students and, and bathroom use and locker room use. So, just instead of calling things single stall bathrooms, I changed the verbiage to gender neutral bathrooms because those are clearly labeled within the school and those are available to any student that needs them, so.
Any questions? Any questions for Mr. Thomas? Dr. Kendee McKenzie?
Hi there. It's just a quick acronym question. I know we're always changing them in education. I'm familiar with Alice, but I don't know what I love you guys is. Thanks.
It's, it's similar in a sense of, in some pieces of it. But what, what it's really gone to, and I just want to have the, the language used is, is different. So, Alice was alert, lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate. The I love you guys protocol is, it's more about being very descriptive about hold, secure, lockdown. So, really, we're, we're spelling out what the student should be doing during a particular. And it's, to me, it's a little cleaner and straightforward. There was always a little confusion around the verbiage with Alice with students. So, the feedback we've gotten from students this year is this, this is more detailed for them and more direct. So, that, that's the change. And it's, it's, yeah, I guess that's it.
Can I just add that that's a, that was work that we did through our district crisis committee? And they have shifted for the district. So, we had, had Alice in place for years as a district. And trainings were provided to all staff across the district this year, and I love you guys. And in addition, we have in, have created the sort of reunification kits for every building. And so, the, that Steve Fiore and Tim Meza and Erin Fitzpatrick, who is our coordinator, she also sits on Nemlec, have done a lot of work. And that training was rolled out to all of the schools. So, just, it is, as Mark said, a shift in language, a shift in protocol. It's hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter versus whatever Alice said. But we worked really hard, I like the word he used earlier, in uniform, to be uniform across all of our schools with our language. So, that, just enough.
And we'll make a double check on that to make sure that the language is consistent in all three levels of the handbook. Thank you.
I, I had a quick question. There had always been a rumor that senior privilege was going away. It seems to still be in this version for next year's seniors.
That rumor never goes away, doesn't it?
It never goes away. It's important.
It will, it will, the way it stands right now will be intact. There's never been a discussion about removing it.
Okay. And then, the other thing that I always hear about is the policy about food not leaving the cafeteria, but it doesn't seem to be super practical. I just wanted to follow up on our rodent friends and whether things seem to be improving at the high school in particular, where people put snacks in their lockers for after-school sports.
I don't know how much they put them in their lockers. They don't use their lockers very much.
Oh.
But they're, they're probably carrying them in those big giant backpacks. But, but as far as food leaving the cafeteria, we do have a few small alternate spots that we treat like the cafeteria in a sense of how we clean them afterwards. I can't speak to increase or decrease of.
Okay.
And just, how is the devices, how, how is that working out? Like, honestly, like, is it?
Yep. Overall, from where we were two years ago, we are in a drastically improved spot. I, I think it's safe to say that it ebbs and flows a little bit on enforcement of that. Certain, certain teachers have a routine. They do, they, it's part of their attendance or whatnot. And, and then, there's, there's others that, you know, they, they do it, but then maybe it wanes a little bit like we do with certain things. Every now and then, I give a little pep talk to say, let's get back to it. We, we notice from the administrative level when we need to kind of pump back up and refocus on that when, when we're seeing a little more of gatherings in the hall, that type of thing. Not so much even cellphone use, but when we see a little more hallway traffic. That usually tells us there's a little more communication going on, so. But overall, drastically improved and the, and the teachers have done a terrific job enforcing that, embracing it. I think they've really found it to be a useful policy.
Can I just add too, just for your own information, something to follow? There's legislation pending or a lot of legislation discussions called the Study Act. And so, it really, the Attorney General in Massachusetts is really pushing. And the question is whether it's going to be a bell-to-bell or if it's going to be a policy language and all of those things. So, just know that this is a really hot topic in legislature right now and that there's a lot of conversation going on about that. So, I just thought I'd share that with all of you.
I don't know if I'd say that, but.
Any additional questions for Mr. Thomas? If not, we would look for a motion to approve the proposed handbook changes.
I'll make that motion.
At all three levels.
I'll second the motion.
The motion's been made and seconded. Can we call a roll, please?
I will call the roll. Um, Rachel Abell?
Yes.
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Um, and then we have our folks online, which I can't see. Um, if I can help, for your help with that.
Yep. Ryan Redmond? Katie Kraft?
Yes. Yes.
Yourself.
Okay, and myself. I'm Kenan McKenzie de Franza. Yes.
And then we have Sadie.
Sorry.
Yes.
And we, we have typically had people, Derek and Casey also. I low, I think Derek dropped.
Okay. Um, so Casey Fiore.
Uh, I've seen.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
I just want to clarify real quickly. Per our city charter, only elected officials' votes are official in the tally, but the way that we run our standing committees is that everyone's voice matters at the table and it's especially important for people to speak up and contribute to the conversation as this is a recommendation that then goes to the full school committee later tonight. So.
And just to, to clarify, because I think sometimes although everyone can participate, when someone is non-voting, um, are they simply abstaining? Are they just staying present? I mean, what is the?
They, they can vote yes. That, that's the convention or the practice that we, or they can vote no. Um, but if there were ever a vote that was contentious or um, you know, a split vote, according to the city charter, it's the elected votes that have to be reported out to the whole school committee. The, this is just a standing committee. It's a recommendation vote. It doesn't actually, it's not a standing vote. Only the school committee can really vote per the charter.
Well, I don't know if I'm any clearer, but it sounds like you can vote, but uh, but uh.
It's, the vote is more advisory to the three of you in how you vote.
Yeah, I think it's been a little um, for me, when it comes to um, those who are representatives, just want to make sure they're clear that they're fully participating. But I want to understand if they vote present or abstaining or what that means. Um, if we're saying that the vote counts.
Probably the best way to do it is to have your non-voting people share their thoughts first before you take your final vote because it's your vote that counts. But you want to hear other people's opinions.
We'll work on that. That was a policy discussion about seven years ago and it's in, in one of the policies that's due for review.
Yes, I would agree.
I always appreciate the opportunity to just say yeah or no or something. So I'm on board.
That's why it's a little, but please feel free to weigh in. It's, but I think it sounds like a policy committee discussion.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
And now you'll see why we started a little early tonight. We've got all of our school improvement plan updates so that our principals can share how they were doing on achieving the goals they set for this year and share some celebrations with you. And then also share the goals and the focuses that they will have in their buildings next year. Um, so we're going to start with those now. Um, you've seen these before. Dr. Trochek uses them in all of her budget presentations. Uh, these were our goal areas for the current year, designing our equity continuum, diversity, belonging, inclusivity, inclusivity and equity, empowering educators. This was a professional development um standpoint that we were looked at, and then innovative practices. Our focus areas included fostering a belonging within our schools. So you'll see on almost every slide, there's um information around building um communities that are belonging for all, chronic absenteeism, high impact instructional strategies, expanding our civics understanding and climate action. The way things, you've seen this slide before as well, and it just shows you how the flow goes. Um, the superintendent um sets with her, with the team and with a lot of input from um various stakeholders, the district improvement plan and sets the goals, which then inform the school improvement plans, which then inform the teacher, individual teacher educator plan. We're going to start with our elementary plan um updates. We are going to um not go in alphabetical order this evening because we're very proud that um Mrs. Montivecki has to leave us as soon as she's finished because she's on a panel for community conversations at the Cabot in a little while.
Thanks, everybody. Good evening. Uh, great to be with everybody tonight. It's always a wonderful chance for me to thank my entire team at the Hannah, all of our educators and all of our families and the whole community for uh coming together around our goals for student success this year. Um, so as Dr. Flaherty highlighted for you, we have unified goals across the elementary um that are reflected in the overall district plan. So our first performance goal at the elementary level is perform, providing students with access to high quality rigorous instruction, which is culturally responsive and also differentiated to meet all of the many diverse learning needs. You got to hear earlier this year at SISL in the fall about our Playful Learning Institute. And we've now expanded the Playful Learning Pedagogy of Play to eleven teachers at Hannah, including our language-based teachers um and our multilingual learner teacher. Um, they're all using the uh theory behind Pedagogy of Play and we're seeing great outcomes with deeper learning experiences, um student voice and choice represented, um while having an awful lot of fun, which is the best part. Um, middle of this year, we implemented learning walks, including all of our instructional leadership team members focused on looking at our ZERN missions and the key learning goals in order to set purpose and uh drive inquiry within the math classroom. We've also expanded in grade two, our win what I need, also called TTT, Targeted Teaching Time, using collaborative examination of student data in order to develop small group instruction um and really enhance uh the movement that we see accelerating student progress and then regrouping students according to the data across that grade level band. Um, our data meetings this year, um, as they always do, they happen three times a year, but we also implemented this year a mid-year teacher reflection meeting um with myself and our instructional coaches to review student performance and also look back at the educators' individual goals to see where they may want to tweak some of their uh monitoring measures to make sure that we achieve the outcomes that we set forth. Uh, this year, we also implemented the project Lead the Way Science Curriculum, focusing on uh providing hands-on opportunities for students to engage with science, technology, engineering and mathematics. That happened both in the STEAM classroom and within individual classrooms themselves. So we're excited to talk more about the outcomes next year when all of the schools involved in the pilot will be reporting back. Our second performance goal, um, I'm gonna move my slide along too, sorry. Our second performance goal is really about building culture, always thinking about the way that uh we are doing the self-work to be ready to really support our students and meet their needs as a faculty. In the fall, we used our faculty meeting time to learn about the work of Brene Brown and examining and living our own values as a team. And at Hannah, we call ourselves a crew. We really embrace that nautical theme and think about what it takes to really have all hands on deck. The faculty participated in seed lessons and discussions throughout the fall with topics on, that were really focused on self-work related to understanding our own multifaceted identities and how I, our own identity connects with larger groups um and how we connect, how that intersects with the way we communicate with students and families. Her grade four student council, shout out to Erica Lepick, who is our Community Connects Coordinator. She wanted to promote leadership for all grade four students and so she enabled all fourth grade students to take part in leadership opportunities all throughout the year. We also recognize character nominations at our whole school morning meetings, which we recog- we also recognize academic excellence and modeling what it means to be kind, responsible and the best you can be. We've also been expanding our use of restorative justice practices, supported by, once again, Erica Lepick and Deanna Krynski, our school adjustment counselor. This year, our grade one students, uh, grade one teachers implemented a student survey given three times this year um to create a more student-centered classroom experience. Finally, our last goal was to ensure that all students have equitable access to resources and the support necessary to have high academic and personal success. This year, at curriculum night, we focused on attendance. You're going to hear that theme throughout all of um the elementaries tonight. Um, for Hannah, we really had a problem with tardiness, um more so than absenteeism, but tardiness equals um absenteeism and loss of time on learning. We are proud to report that this year we had a ten percent reduction in tardiness over the last year, which has really recaptured that learning time. Once again, Erica Lepick really helped us drive that attendance superhero program, which promoted and celebrated um outstanding attendance. We use clear messaging. We saw that across all five elementary schools. I've got a picture of my sign there. I gotta tell you, those signs matter. Um, every morning I'm out there greeting students and I know that my colleagues like to do the same thing. When we hit eight o'clock, I walk down the sidewalk and I dramatically flip that sign. They see me coming. People come into high gear when they see me headed toward that sign. Uh, really gets the message across. Time on learning. Um, learning is beginning right now. Parents are then coming into the office to sign their children in. And I think that extra measure of accountability has really mattered in terms of reducing our tardiness this year.
Mrs. Montivecki, can you tell them what the other side of the sign says?
Uh, the, the other side says um, your child is now late. Oops, your child is now late. Please come and sign them in at the office.
An adult must come in and sign them in the office.
So we love that welcoming message and the reinforcing that time. Um, and as we know, next year we are bracing for an earlier start time. So it's going to be really important that we get that messaging, messaging out sooner about the earlier start time. Uh, this year, we developed a school-wide um expectation matrix for all students as well as all faculty. And I want to thank the team at B A, B M S and Kate Twombly for collaborating with my instructional coaches and my I L T to take the template that they used um to share what they had learned in that process and um implement that at Hannah. And it's been extremely successful as well as further implementing restorative justice practices. I'm going to um leave you this evening with some highlights on our perform, performance overall. Uh, our 2024 MCAS mathematics, grade four students um overreached on the state average. So we exceed the state average by twelve percent in math. And again, in grade three, our MCAS math results show that students in, in the meeting in exceeding category exceeded the state by nineteen percent. Um, I'm very hopeful about this year's math results because something I didn't mention in the last slide is that we had perfect attendance for grade three and grade four for both sessions of the math MCAS. And that's a historical first for the Hannah Elementary School. So a- again, tying together um student performance, our high expectations and showing up when it really matters. Um, the 2024 spring benchmark, grade one end of year DIBELS benchmark shows that we've got ninety-six percent of our students meeting the benchmark. And we also have our fall-to-spring DIBELS data analysis showing that we've got a fourteen percent reduction in the number of students in the DIBELS intensive category.
One thing I would add that was not on this list, that um Hannah and our preschool are really being viewed as leaders in the state around the Playful Learning Institute. And they actually were invited this week to present at a conference. And we're really proud of the work that they're doing there.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your support.
Now, Ms. Mrs. Hart will talk about the Ayers, Rylside School.
All right. Hi again, everyone. Um, so first, I just want to say, in the spirit of knowing that the five of us are going to come up, you will hear some of the same things repeated. So if there is an overlap, I'll just kind of do a me too, you know? So you're not hearing me go in depth. Yes, uh, over and over. So uh, we are very proud to talk about Ayers um and the work that we have done in this past year uh around our first goal, which is high-quality rigorous instruction. Um, this was really our second year of diving into looking at high-leverage instructional practices. Uh, last year, we really focused, our staff focused on the work of uh Dr. John Hattie. And this year, we transitioned it into looking at uh the year one of looking at this culturally responsive teaching rubric, which is published by Desi, but it is based on the work of Dr. Zaretta Hammond. Um, and its focus really is around helping all teachers raise the floor on high quality instruction for all students. Um, it's research-based and we really used it this year as an opportunity for reflection. Um, we dug into each category and each marker and thought about what would that look like if we were to walk into a classroom and we saw a teacher doing this. Um, and we were able to really kind of fine-tune what it is that we would see if we walked into a classroom. Our next step with this is to use it in terms of walkthroughs. Um, there is also a student version of this. So the one that we've worked on this year was what it looks like teacher facing. There is a student-facing version. So if you were to walk into the room, what would you see students doing? Um, and that will also be part of our implementation for next year. Um, we are a proud Project Lead the Way school. Uh, Mrs. Montivecki talked about that as well. We are one of three who received the grant. Um, so this was our pilot year for um inquiry-based science uh instruction and units. And we were able to pilot that in second and third grade this year. I'm going to jump into MCAS successes. Um, we are really proud of our 2024 MCAS scores. There's a lot of algorithms and weighting of scores, but I think one of the things we're most proud of is that we have an accountability score of seventy-seven, which to break it down basically means that our school performed better than seventy-seven percent of similar schools statewide. And the reason that we're really so proud of that, of course, we're, we're proud of the growth of all students, but specifically um our subgroup, our high needs subgroup made incredible gains in 2024. Um, we went from, our high need subgroup went from earning eight percent of the total possible points to earning ninety-two percent in 2024. Um, they exceeded targets set by the state for both E L A and math in grades three and four, and we exceeded typical growth in grade four um in both math and we had high growth in E L A. So we're very, very proud of that. We feel like we're on the right track in terms of what we're looking at for uh high-impact instructional strategies. And we're really excited to see this for all students, but particularly for some of our more vulnerable learners. Oops, sorry, you changed it, but I didn't. Um, okay, so uh, performance goal number two, which is valuing diversity, promoting inclusion. Um, this is, for those of you who haven't been in our building, this is the mural that greets you when you walk in. Um, you belong here. This year, uh, definitely the highlight for me is we welcomed our own AIM program to Ayers School. So we have now joined the ranks of North Beverly and uh Cove School. And while we are a very small cohort, we are mighty. We have about six to seven students, uh, one teacher and uh multiple paraprofessionals. But um, it has been just a wonderful addition to our building. It has been wonderful for our staff, for our students. Um, we had actually uh in-house professional development by Alex Crawford, who's currently at the Hannah School, um, but formerly worked as an AIM teacher. She came and did professional development to all of our staff, including paraprofessionals, on neurodivergent learners and the history of inclusive education. And to this day, I've been meeting with teachers this week on their summit of evaluations. They're saying, my gosh, that professional development really changed the way that I think about inclusive education. And so I'm so excited about that. Um, and we're looking forward to the work to come. Some of our plans for next year uh include uh, we are in the process of getting our own chapter going of best buddies um and running that uh for uh to run like in coherence with our AIM program. Um, and I know that uh we had also talked about like looping in um, oh my gosh, I'm sorry, I don't have this on my slide. Special Olympics to come do some training for our buildings um at Cove, North Beverly and Ayers at the elementary level. Uh, and our final goal, goal number three, sorry, I don't have a pretty picture for this one. Um, this is around equitable access to necessary services. Uh, one of the big things that we're proud of was we joined ranks again with other uh schools in offering a tiptoe into kindergarten program where we allowed rising kindergarten students to come. Um, we really spent time getting to know them, showing them around the building. Uh, it was a way for us to get to know them, of course, um, but also to ease the anxiety. This is a huge transition for families um starting elementary school for the first time. And so we were able to run that in August very successfully. Um, and then going along really with um the handbook edits that we made around attendance, which was at the elementary level, adding that meeting um when we have attendance concerns, we focused a lot on that this year with the help of City Connects. Um, and really it became like a meeting of how can we help with resources? What are the, are there additional uh things that we can do to get your child to school on time, to make your life easier? And a lot of that um also involves shout out to transportation um and Dana Kruipshank because he's always willing to work with us um in terms of how can we get kids on buses? Um, and so I think that was successful for us as well this year.
I know we're tight on time. I'm gonna be really quick. Um, I just heard a couple terms I didn't understand.
Oh, sure.
Sorry. Um, but before I get to that, for the slide on the MCAS numbers, I think it was slide two, it seemed really exciting, but I just wanted you to explain it a little bit.
Sure.
So um, because that's a big jump for high need students. It says earning eight percent of total possible points to ninety-two percent. So just like a blurb and then what is that? Like, how do you think that happened?
Yeah, sure. So um, again, it's, Desi loves a good algorithm. So when we're looking at students, we're looking at, they get points for achievement, right? So how, how high they score overall. They get They get points for growth, they get points for attendance. And so when you're looking at a subgroup, each of those components come together to develop an overall percentage of points. So in 2023, this subgroup, this individual subgroup scored only 8%. And most of that was in achievement, to be honest with you. Our achievement scores, we scored very few points in achievement overall. And we earned all the possible points, which really bumped us this year for achievement for this subgroup in 2024. Exactly. And so I think that I would attribute most of that to the work we're doing around instructional practices, high-leverage instructional practices. One of the big takeaways that we talked about last year was almost anything can have a positive impact on student achievement, showing up every day in the classroom, if you do nothing else. But it's the practices that make the biggest difference, right? And how do we zero in on those practices and how do we use those more consistently? So that's what I would attribute that to, the work around that.
Excellent. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. And then lastly, what's Best Buddies? I'm sorry.
Oh, Best Buddies. Yes, so Best Buddies is a program, well, it's a huge program. And it's around partnering up peers, so students with disabilities and students who do not have disabilities. And so the way we hope to have that work is they have a buddy, each student would have a buddy in the morning. We're hoping they would come in in the morning, they would have breakfast with them, they would play games in the morning as a way to just further, yeah, create social connections in a more inclusive environment. We have already kind of talked about setting this chapter up, and we have so much interest and on our student-facing side. We're hoping it's just going to be something for fourth graders next year, kind of as a special thing to pilot. But we're really excited about it.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you.
So as you know, it's springtime and there's event, one event after another. And a parent stopped me last week and said, boy, you must really want this year to be done. And it really stopped me in my tracks because that's not the mindset that I have carried this year or in our building each day, and not the one that I've felt in our classrooms. And so I appreciate having a few moments, and I realize I have very little looking at the time, to just acknowledge, we have had, in spite of, you know, having a few sort of unpleasant experiences this year, this has been an amazing year for us at Centerville. And I feel like we have really accomplished so much. And I only wish I could have, you know, a little bit more time tonight to talk about all those things. But similar to what you've heard from my principal pals, our goals are really focused on our culture, our instruction, and for us, sustainability. One of our strategies in thinking about involving our families is really looking at, looking for opportunities to create learning experiences that we can engage our families in. So we're just coming off the success of our fourth grade musical, our fourth grade play, which is almost hitting 1,000 views on YouTube in less than a week, thanks to Bev Cam, who joined us. But, you know, those experiences, like every student is involved in that. I really feel like it epitomizes kind of the culture at Centerville, because every student has a role in that play. We uncover hidden talents and celebrate the unique strengths, and we watch the kids grow so much in that. And our other, we had our second graders did a public art display as a culmination of their civil rights unit. And we've just felt like that was really important work for the kids to be doing this year. Another thing that was new for us this year was in kindergarten, thanks to Mary O'Neill, inviting in senior reading buddies. So we had many senior citizens coming to Centerville every week, so committed to working with our kindergarten students, not only having our kids read stories to them, but sharing stories. And so we loved having that. Our blood drive, our Beaver Challenge came back this year, and then obviously our students performing at the Wang Theater. So between art and academics, we really feel like those are opportunities to engage all of our families in the work that we do at Centerville. I sort of wished I was up here, I put a picture of the Reading Festival up there. I wish I was up here with Barb and Alex, because one of the conversations that we keep opening up with our families is around the battle that we are doing to get, to have our kids see themselves as readers, right? We are battling devices, we are battling social media, and that's a real challenge for us. And so something that has given new importance to our Reading Festival in sending another message about the importance of reading. For the instructional piece, coming off, you know, our MCAS scores last year, we really needed to focus more heavily on our ELA scores. And so our overarching aim this year was to sort of think about the volume of reading, not only within the ELA block, but also what additional requirements that we have through our Mass Book Award Challenge. So that's a requirement for all fourth graders to, beyond what the reading that we expect them to do in the classrooms. We are, we have required reading requirements for them in fourth grade, and we've added that with third grade. Because we want all of our kids to see themselves as readers. And I'm going to use that statistic that I think Barb shared, about 68%, was it 68%? Kids sort of feeling calmer, I love that. But for us, according to our DIBELS data, 75% of our kids are on level, according to our spring data. That's a high number, that's our highest number. So that, in spite of all the challenges of the year, we came out at a higher place. And I feel like each percentage point is, we claw at that. And so at Centerville, we're just going to get a little bit better each year. We're going to shift our practices and really focus. And so that was a success for us. In math, that is, our math MCAS, math MCAS scores over the last years, we were exceeding our targets. This year, we put our strategic minds behind implementing the new perspectives units to really enhance our ZERN missions. And those, those are really creating thoughtful experiences for kids to engage in the math content. But to implement those, you have to do a lot of professional development with teachers to understand the math. And so we had sort of set out like, let's try, let's try to implement four, four units this year, because each one is an undertaking of itself, and then to weave it into our ZERN curriculum. We ended up implementing 11, because our teachers were just so positive and so engaged. And, and I feel like we, that was a major success for us. And number one, seeing the capabilities of our kids, developing our understandings as, developing our understanding as educators, and just seeing our kids love math and feel fairly successful. So the 71% is, the number of students who are 80% or above is according to their math benchmark. And I had presented about our Centerville reading team at a former system, so I won't spend too much time on that. But we have some consistent practices, and we are certainly looking to raise the bar and work with our community partners to increase our recycling. Next up for us is just having a clear focus on reading comprehension vocabulary development. We feel like our kids are doing well with their fluency. We need them to, we need them to think more and deep, more deeply. And so we feel that our comprehension vocabulary development is timely for us. We're going to keep staying the course with our math work. We feel like we're really investing our time and energy in things that are working for kids. So keep on keeping on there, and then continued student ownership over our recycling practices. Thank you, everyone.
And I would highly recommend checking out that link and watching Willy Wonka, it was phenomenal. All right, Ms. Blanchard.
Hello. Thank you all for having me here. I'm excited to share the magic that's happening at North Beverly. My goals are similar to everyone else's, so some things might be a bit redundant. So one of the things we did with our equity, equitable access to high-quality instruction and rigorous instruction that is culturally responsive and differentiated is our teachers in grades K through three participated in vertical team learning walks and reflective conversations to improve our foundations instruction. And you can see that that's been actually highly effective when you look at the chart on the bottom, the green chart. I'm just going to pull up kindergarten data. We started the year at 56% of our kids meeting benchmark, and we are ending the year with 86% meeting benchmark. And if you look on the reverse end, on the blue chart, at the beginning of the year in grade one, we had 27% of our students in our high-needs category, and we are ending the year at 3%. So what we are doing is working, so there's good things happening. Other things we did is we curated supplemental texts to enhance the knowledge-building curriculum that we're using, the Witten Wisdom, and show additional perspectives utilizing the cultural responsive teaching rubric that Megan had talked about earlier. We are purposeful with our scheduling to maximize our instructional time. We are consistent, targeted, and explicit in our small group instruction. And we differentiate that instruction based on the students' needs in front of us. We provide our students with multiple opportunities to practice every day, which is something that I think in the past we have been lacking. So we teach them it, and then we're giving them the opportunity to practice what they're learning. We are constantly progressing, progress monitoring, and we use that data to inform our instruction. And we're currently, we're constantly spiraling our skills to make sure we are meeting the needs of our students. We had some professional development utilizing the teaching and learning progression tools from Witten Wisdom. And we did a big focus on efforts on writing instruction and the use of our anchor papers. Just to highlight a little bit of our data, looking at our math MCAS for this current year, 68% of our school passed their grade MCAS, which is in comparison to 44% at the state level. And my fourth grade, who I'm super, super proud of, we had 77% of our students meeting or exceeding expectations, which is in comparison to 46% at the state level. So what we're doing is working, and I'm very proud of my staff. Our next goal was about foster an inclusive school environment. And we continue some of the work that we did last year, where we did some of the seed training, where we delved into our name stories to know where we came from, and we're continuing that work with our students. We also engage staff in mirrors and windows exercises to deepen self-awareness and promote inclusive dialogue. What I am most proud of, of what we've done at North Beverly in the last year and a half, we created an inclusive photo gallery where every student in the building is highlighted to clearly create a sense of involvement. And what I say to my kids at the beginning of the year, I said, when you're at home, your pictures are all around your house. This is your school family, and you guys are, you're all around. And so one of my staff meetings, we actually took the time, and we did an ice bike to ensure that every student was represented on the walls. And if you could see the joy on their faces when they come in and they see a new picture hanging on the wall of them, it is just mind-blowing. So it's, that's been so special. Another thing we worked on this year, our staff engaged in the Harvard Relationship Mapping Protocol, which basically we had a picture of every student in the building. I had signs all over the walls, and teachers went around, and if they had, they put a green dot on students they felt they had a real secure relationship with. And then we did the same thing, and we looked around and had them put a red dot on students that they felt did not have a strong connection with people. And then I had staff members actually commit themselves to working with that student and building a bigger connection there. And we revisited that once, and we will continue to revisit that in the upcoming years. It's been pretty powerful. And I'm also very proud of, we were able to introduce two communication boards for our playgrounds. And then providing equitable access to our resources. You had heard this before from other members, but we offered a tiptoe to kindergarten program to all our incoming K students. It was a huge success. We had no tears on the first day of school for the last two years. And last year, we had 41 students.
Don't jinx yourself.
I can take it. We had 41, 41 students out of our 71, I believe we had last year. And this year, we already have 47 out of our 66 registered. So I'm very much looking forward to that. We also thank you, Megan Sudak, for her Attendance superhero initiative. We loved that, as did my students and my staff. You can see here, there's a picture, oops, drop one more back. There's all of us, I'm going too slow for you. We're just superheroes. We actually embrace that at our whole school meetings. We give out prizes, and it's really, it's been so positive for our kids. It's been so encouraging. We make little videos for them. We had one day that we got up to, our highest percent was 97%, so we made a little video where my school adjustment counselor is singing, and the kids just, they died, they loved it. And so then we upped our ante that, you hit 99%, we'll let you silly string her, they hit it. Today, we hit 99 again, so I'm not sure what she's going to do. Probably me. But working through this, we also reduced our student tardies by 22% compared to last year, which is huge. Something else we did is we reimagined our book fair to be more equitable for our students. In the past, I mean, I love, you know, connecting with our community businesses. However, our demographics have changed a bit, and so we, my PTO, we've kind of taken in a bunch of donation books, and we've been, you know, kids will leave with a bounty full of books for a dollar. So that has been huge. And another thing I'm really proud about is this year, we were able to support 72 of our students through our Holiday and Coat Drive. Just two years ago, we only were able to service 31 students, so that's 132% increase. So I was pretty proud of that. And then where we're going next. So we're going to continue to work on our high-impact instructional strategies. We'll be expanding our vertical teams to, this year, we did foundations. This year, we're going to do the other subjects as well. Some intentional planning with backwards design at the beginning of the school year to look at specific areas of concern of our incoming students. We're going to restructure our wind time to make sure it's most effective. And we're going to focus on ways to enhance the learning of our highest-performing students, because that is some place that we traditionally fall short of. And we're going to continue our work on chronic absenteeism and the work on fostering an inclusive school environment. We'll continue the work with the seed. I'm really looking at ways to work with the other two schools, Cove and Ayers, on ways to have all of our AIM students really feel fully immersed in our school community, thanks to a Bev Ev grant I'm getting. I'm creating a sensory room, which has some movement and sensory items that kids can go to regulate. And what I'm most excited about for next year is I am starting a golden ticket initiative with our incoming K students. There's a shirt there that we, I will be hand-delivering to the homes of each student this summer with a golden ticket. Welcome to North Beverly, as you are one of our stars. So I'm hoping that will help kind of keep our community connected, so, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. I'd like, I know we're running close to 7:30, so I'd like to propose that we let Kate finish, so the elementaries are done. And then if we have to pause this meeting to do the other meeting and come back, we can do that.
Good. All right. Thank you. And I'll, I'll be brief. There's a lot that is repeated. And I am happy to talk to anybody if they want to talk about how fabulous Cove is, anytime, so please reach out. Similarly, we had, as an elementary team, we shared these three overarching kind of buckets, if you will, of goals. So you're, you can go on to the next one, Dr. Flaherty. We'll start with celebrations. I am celebrating the end of my first year as the principal of Cove. And so with that came really my entry plan and celebrating kind of those initial goals of building relationships and partnerships. Through that, we have established, oop, we have established many opportunities for teacher leadership and staff voice. That was really important to me as I came into the building. So we now, over the course of the year, have established instructional leadership team, a culture committee, our crisis team, a library envisioning and planning committee, and a school council. So those are all kind of the drivers of all of the work that we've been doing and plan to do in the future. Some highlights from our first performance goal of high-impact instructional strategies. We took a look at really kind of from in-house, doing some building-based PD around what teachers were reporting, they were kind of seeking out, wanting more info and more time spent doing. Our data meetings started to include kind of some more, more of a micro lens of individual student urgency. We just finished kind of that second part this week. We're in the midst of many, many hours of one-on-one data meetings. Heidi Moran, shout-out to Heidi Moran and Heather Colton, who have been joining me on those. And so we have been celebrating a lot this week on the individual student level, which has been wonderful. I created an instructional leadership team along with teachers, and we have been really building, kind of looking at our instructional practices as a whole, and then making plans for some building schedule changes to maximize our instruction, and also kind of what we want to do in the next school year. So many more things to come that I'll be reporting on next year. And then our literacy planning, really honing in on what students need and being just very, very planful and strategic down to the letter sound in ELA. For fostering belonging within our schools, we have been increasing our community meetings and doing a lot of staff community building through our culture committee. That culture committee has met and created some staff protocols and some matrices that we're going to be rolling out next year. We've created some new staff protocols and procedures for our AIM staff and really bringing them kind of into the fold in new ways. I've worked really hard to communicate with the stakeholders and create some just really consistent caregiver communications. And our PTO partnership is second to none, they're amazing. And we've been creating some new traditions with them. Under the performance goal of chronic absenteeism, you can see a picture there of, shout-out to our counselor, Abby Slazak, Beverly Community Connects counselor, who is in her cape, coming to do a pop-up dance party in grade four for a perfect attendance that day. So really trying to find fun ways to be proactive with kids. But as I mentioned before, when we were talking about the handbook, it really does come down to systems of support for the families and talking to caregivers and creating those relationships to make sure that we are giving families what they need in order to get their kids to school on time and present and ready to learn. So that has been really successful. Just some data to celebrate. These are, it's a comparison chart of where our students were coming in beginning of the year, students that were at or above reading expectations, the light blue being at the beginning of the year and the end of the year where we are leaving and hope to hold them there, which has happened year to year, which is wonderful. And this is as measured by the DIBELS And this is as measured by the Dibbles composite, so really looking at all the components of reading overall. Similarly, in math, the orange is where we came in, and the shades of blue are where we are leaving. So, you know, really celebrating where we are coming in and building our mastery of At the attendance level, what we've noticed is that while we still have some absences, we've really shifted to have excused absences. So partnering with families to just really make sure that they are seeking out doctor support, you know, whatever support to make sure that they are excused with their absences and lessening our unexcused absences. And those signs, I will echo Mrs. Montivecki, that, that has had a big impact in most grade levels on our tardies. So looking ahead to next year, I am excited to be already planning with my team around what we will be implementing in year two for me. Looking at the high-impact instructional strategies, rolling out a new building schedule that is maximizing instructional time and creating just exponentially longer blocks, especially in math, for uninterrupted learning in both math and ELA. So we're really excited about that. ILT will shift its focus from structures to then instruction, that we will have the structures in place to make sure that the billing schedule is supporting those instructional times, and we're really gonna start looking at our PD and walkthrough lens to support each other. And then creating some more consistency and understanding around math trajectories. We've been having a lot of conversation about kind of teachers feeling like we don't really know that trajectory of standard building and also scaffolding and strategy building. And so really looking at that trajectory K through four, through that lens. We are already expanding our wind blocks to expand more planning for comprehension, but we also are saying a lot to ourselves, "Wow, our ELA wind block is working so well. How can we maximize those strategies and supports but within mathematics?" So that's gonna be a really big shift next year, too. Around belonging and creating a culture of high expectations, we are hoping to create some more routines to strengthen our school and caregiver, caregiver relationships. We are expanding our SEL curricula to include some teacher-driven whole-school lessons and experience that will teach whole-school expectations concurrently through some advisory model. Also creating some new routines to welcome families. So really being thoughtful about how we're welcoming families to our school when they join Cove mid-year, but also how we welcome our students in our AIM program, who, that might not be their homeschool, and making sure that they find a home with us at Cove. And then a rollout of a new SEL MTSS, structured to support needs and streamline staff response. So the culture committee has worked really hard to create some matrices and expectations, and we'll be rolling that out. And lastly, just really leaning into celebration and joy and finding our Cove story and being able to articulate that and celebrate that out to all of our stakeholders. Hoping to increase our opportunities for celebrating our families and their unique, diverse perspectives that they bring to the table, and also creating, just increasing joyful memories and traditions while still maintaining that academic urgency and high expectation for students.
Any questions for Ms. Twombly? I think one additional celebration we would like to add to that list is how successful your first year as a principal has been. That's not always easy, just like a first-year teacher, right? There's a lot of learning to do. And your poise and your thinking and bringing your community together is far beyond the, what a first-year leader usually accomplishes. So thank you.
Well, I've had some amazing mentors to guide me through my years and also through this year, so thank you. Thanks.
What is the pleasure of the committee? Because I know we have a lot of other guests here.
Yeah, I think we should probably take a recess from this meeting. I understand if people need to leave, especially students who have finals coming up. We would recess this, and then we would be able to come back as SISL after we've done the recognitions, when we typically take a recess to congratulate the recipients. Then we'll return to SISL, so we'll recess the regular, return to SISL to finish off, because I know we have a couple more voting items that have to be done before the end of the year.
Correct.
And then we'll resume the regular school committee meeting. So I'd like to make a motion at this time that we recess SISL to return after the recognitions portion and the regular.
Second. A motion's been made in second. Can we have a roll call vote?
Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Rachel Abel?
Yes.
Sadie Brennan?
Yes.
Casey Fiore?
Obstain.
Online?
Katie Kraft?
Yes.
And Ryan Redmond?
Yes.
I think that's all we have online.
And I'm Kenia McKenzie de Franza. Yes.
Okay. Motion, 7:36 PM. And Bev Cam, we're going to take one minute to roll into the regular meeting, and then we're gonna return to this meeting, and then we're gonna return to the regular meeting. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone.
All set? Thank you so much. We are trying to cram in a year worth of goodness into one evening's meeting, so we appreciate your patience with us. The time is 7:45. This is the regular school committee meeting, and today's date is June 11th, Wednesday, June 11th. We thank BEV CAM for providing online, real-time access to this public meeting. We do not have any members of this meeting that are joining remotely tonight, so I'll just say thank you to BEV CAM for providing this service. And for our attendance, we have Mayor Cahill, Kim Quelo, Kenan McKenzie de Franza. Dr. Silva sends his regrets. He is at the lacrosse banquet at this moment in time. Then we have Lorinda Fiznick, and I am Rachel Abel. So we are six and accounted for. We're also joined by Dr. Sue Churocek, Dr. Dorothy Flaherty, and pretty much all of our building administrators, so too many to name. I want to jump right in tonight. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to recognize students, employees, and community members, mostly our retirees, do a BEV Ed awards presentation, and then our student representative presentation. Then we're going to recess the regular meeting, offer some congratulations, and resume our Curriculum Instruction and Student Life Standing Committee, because we have some unfinished business that does need to be voted by that Standing Committee before we can return to it in our regular meeting. So with that all rushed through, if I could ask Dr. Churocek to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Dr. Churocek, I don't know if you would like to help us with the first set of recognitions.
I am actually sending up the, I actually have this of retirees this year, so I can share that. It'll just be in the background while we're.
Okay.
You can go to the picture. You don't have to show it the whole time, but I thought. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I just have a slide that has the list of all of our retirees for the Beverly Public Schools this year. It'll be playing up in the background, but we can go ahead and do our ceremony up here. So are you going to join me?
Sure.
All right, awesome. All right. We have a mic up there. All right, well, I'm gonna. Thank you. All right, good night, every, I mean, good evening, everybody. Not good night yet, it's almost good night. I'm getting there. First of all, I want to thank you all for joining us. I'm so excited to kind of be here to introduce and welcome and congratulate all of our retirees. Lots of us are retiring, so there's a lot, a lot going on. So first, I'd like to thank you all for all that you have done, and I'm going to call you up each one at a time. We have a little gift for all of you, and just to thank you for your years of service. So I don't know if you're, who is here and who's not. I'll say the names, and if you're here, come on up. And I'm going to look over to Mrs. Twombly. Is Mrs. Bogerman here? Oh, that's too bad, all right. So well, Mary Bogerman is retiring. She is a teacher at the Ayers School. She has been in Beverly Public Schools for 24 years, and so we thank her for her 24 years of service. Mrs. Twombly is her daughter, so we're going to send her gift home with Mrs. Twombly. Come on up. You know, our kids go through it too, right? So it's as much of their service as it is ours. So there you go. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. And with 31 years of service, I believe, all at Beverly High School? Yes, I want to welcome up Michelle Burke. She is a guidance counselor at Beverly High School. We thank her so much for her service. We appreciate you and all you do. There you go. And I know that Jean is here. Jean Gardner has been a paraprofessional in Beverly for 27 years. I've worked with her myself in my own classrooms, so it's a special joy for me to thank you for everything that you've done, for all, you've impacted so many students' lives. So thank you, Jean. And is Bill Gilligan here? No, I don't see him. Well, Mr. Gilligan has seven years of service. He works as a parrot here at the middle school. And actually, I know he's retiring, but I keep seeing him. Keeps coming back to substitute, so we're very grateful for that. And any of you, as you're going to think about what you're going to do in September, there's a great substitute list that we have running, and you're more than welcome to join it. This next person is a paraprofessional currently at the Centerville School. I have to say, Maureen Leonard worked with me in my classroom for the first six years of her time here. That was, she told me today, 28 years ago, or 27 years ago. So that's a long time ago. But for 28 years of service, first with our students in our special education program, and now with our EL students at multiple schools, but most recently, she's been filling in as a long-term sub at the Centerville Elementary School. So, Mo. Is Beth Malone here? So Beth Malone is also retiring after 18 years of service. I believe she's a paraprofessional at North Beverly Elementary School, and so we thank her for her service. We'll make sure that we get her gift to her. Is Michelle Quealy here? I think I did, I thought I saw her. Michelle has 11 years of service with us in Beverly. She is a teacher here at the Beverly Middle School, and I have actually spent time in her classroom, and I appreciate everything that you do for our students and everything.
Congratulations to you, too.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
This is super fun, isn't it? Is Mary Jane Quinnlin here? No, Mary Jane Quinnlin is retiring after 18 years of service. She's, I believe, a culinary teacher at Beverly High School, and so we thank her. And Joyce Roy. I know, I saw you, Joyce. And Joyce is 22 years of service. And currently, you're at Cove. Cove, right? Current, Cove, a paraprofessional at Cove. So we appreciate everything that you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, you too.
Yeah, thank you. Is Sue Tarr here? I don't think Sue made it. Okay, Sue Tarr is also retiring, 32 years of service. Sue was also, I was the principal of the Ayers School. She was one of my teachers throughout my entire principalship at Ayers, and she has most recently been the math coach over at North Beverly Elementary School. So congratulations to Sue. And I know that Brenda Wilson is here. And Brenda, we thank you for 23 years of service. Brenda is here at Beverly Middle School. Someone else who I've worked alongside on many occasions. Thank you. And last, but not least, Margie Roy.
Having the Roy's next week.
Having the Roy's next week is a little tricky, but actually, I spent the afternoon celebrating Margie and Mo. So I want, 22 years of service in Beverly, and at the Centerville, at Cove first, and then at Centerville, all in kindergarten? All in kindergarten? So think of how many people you launched off into our wonderful schools. So I appreciate you, I appreciate all that you've done.
Thank you.
And I guess that's it.
Well, we have two other significant retirees to recognize this evening. We will also recognize them a bit more next week. But I want to thank from the bottom of the school committee's heart, as well as from our students, the contributions that Dr. Dorothy Flaherty has made in her six years since she joined us as the Assistant Superintendent. And this is rounding out 32 years of service to students, so thank you so much. And you get a car. Okay. And then, of course, Dr. Churocek. Dr. Churocek was my girl's first principal at Ayers. My elder daughter got her haircut to match Dr. Churocek's haircut. It was really cute at the time. She idolized Dr. Churocek and loved coming into Beverly Public Schools. And I think the warm welcoming that you gave our students, the dedicated service that you have provided to us over 29 years here in Beverly, is, we're going to miss you immensely. And I just want to thank you for putting up with us. We didn't always agree on things, and I think that we had really spirited debates and discussions. And I think that the district is a stronger place and in a really good place for our new superintendent that we're welcoming because of your hard work, your dedication, and your heart. Thank you.
Is Sue Tarr here? I don't think Sue made it. Okay, Sue Tarr is also retiring, 32 years of service. Sue was also, I was the principal of the Ayers School. She was one of my teachers throughout my entire principalship at Ayers, and she has most recently been the math coach over at North Beverly Elementary School. So congratulations to Sue. And I know that Brenda Wilson is here. And Brenda, we thank you for 23 years of service. Brenda is here at Beverly Middle School. Someone else who I've worked alongside on many occasions. And last, but not least, Margie Roy.
Having the Roy's next week.
Having the Roy's next week is a little tricky, but actually, I spent the afternoon celebrating Margie and Mo. So I want, 22 years of service in Beverly, and at the Centerville, at Cove first, and then at Centerville, all in kindergarten? All in kindergarten? So think of how many people you launched off into our wonderful schools. So I appreciate you, I appreciate all that you've done. And I guess that's it.
Well, we have two other significant retirees to recognize this evening. We will also recognize them a bit more next week. But I want to thank from the bottom of the school committee's heart, as well as from our students, the contributions that Dr. Dorothy Flaherty has made in her six years since she joined us as the Assistant Superintendent. And this is rounding out 32 years of service to students, so thank you so much. And you get a car. Okay. And then, of course, Dr. Churocek. Dr. Churocek was my girl's first principal at Ayers. My elder daughter got her haircut to match Dr. Churocek's haircut. It was really cute at the time. She idolized Dr. Churocek and loved coming into Beverly Public Schools. And I think the warm welcoming that you gave our students, the dedicated service that you have provided to us over 29 years here in Beverly, is, we're going to miss you immensely. And I just want to thank you for putting up with us. We didn't always agree on things, and I think that we had really spirited debates and discussions. And I think that the district is a stronger place and in a really good place for our new superintendent that we're welcoming because of your hard work, your dedication, and your heart. Thank you. Okay. It is our distinct pleasure to invite our partners in this endeavor. The Beverly Education Foundation, in our June meeting, also awards some grants. And so I don't know Doug, or Hannah, or Catherine, if one of you wants to come up and give an overview of this year's awardees.
Good evening. First of all, thank you so much for all of what you guys did within the schools. It's just amazing. I just sat there and was thinking what a positive impact all of you had on thousands of different students. And I appreciate that, and I think that we all appreciate how hard that is to do and what it took. And I'm sad but happy that you get to retire at the same time. The Beverly Education Foundation, we've, I don't know how we, I don't know if we do an overview, but it's been a pretty good year, and we're really happy to be able to support education and all the different quality things that you do in the classrooms and with the parent-teacher grants. I think that it's just been a really fun thing to do. I've always enjoyed it. I was at the Scholar's Night the other night, and it was moving so fast, I did not get to invite anyone there, students or adults, to join the BEV Ed Foundation or any other foundation that gives out money, because I got to tell you, it's one of the best things in the world is to go and give money away. So it's really fun work to do, too. So I offer that up to all of you. Now that you're retired, you have time, and we'd love to have you.
This has been an interesting year, but I think it's really ended very strongly. Looking at it from a grants proposal, looking at the grants that are going to be funded here tonight, that we're all going forward. And I think that's a really positive thing. Before we get into the grants, what I would like to do is, this is the springtime, so we honor teachers. And there are two teachers who have just been honored, but I would like to present Dr. Flaherty with a certificate stating how much you have done for the Beverly Public Schools. Thank you so much. And also, Dr., oops. Also, Dr. Churocek, thank you so much. I think one of our first grants that we knew that you were a keeper was the courteous cafeteria grant from Ayers, where you were talking about community. And I think that's the first time I heard "community" in a grant. And you were, you were trying, you noticed the kids were not eating with manners, and she came up.
That's an understatement.
And she, no, but she, you proposed goals as to how to do it, and it was a very successful grant. And I think that was such a great thing of making mealtime special in school. Thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. And thank you to BEV Ed. You guys are, thank you so much. I just want to take a moment, too, to thank BEV Ed. BEV Ed is an amazing, amazing foundation and provides so much to our students and to our teachers and to our community. And so we're so lucky and grateful for the really hard work that you two put in and the board members, and I know there are a number of them here tonight, too. So thank you all for what you do. The grants that you're about to award, they're really awesome opportunities for our teachers to be able to kind of dig into a passion project that they have, provides them a little bit more money for resourcing for it, and it's just, it just benefits our students greatly. So thank you very much, too. Thank you. And thank you for this. Thank you.
The first grant we'd like to give out is very special to us. We've been doing this for a number of years, and it's near and dear to our hearts. And this is the one, the, our grant that we give to the one-to-one project for the high school. So we give it to Judy Miller and Steve Palomo. It's just a great program. It's one that I think that has been emulated in so many other schools. So I know it's a great program, and we've done really well, and I just want to keep it going. Thanks. I think, who do we have next?
The next grant is a district-wide grant, and it came to us via Hannah, but it has become, I think, a real game changer. Abigail Sykes is a very inspired registered dietitian nurse. And she has put together this grant called Hooray for Health, which really is, it encompasses so much. And I think the children learn so much. So it's about, you know, understanding what your body does, how it signals to you, how to take care of your body, how to eat properly, nutrition. They've just expanded, and they have it now in here, six to eight grades, and it's B-positive body image, where kids tackle very tough subjects, talking about how do you look? How do you feel? The negative comment that was made in the hall. What do you do about that kind of stuff? And then the other piece that she's also added on is a parental, again, engagement to bring community. And so Abigail, and Christina Lee, and Jody Elder, come on up. Thank you so much for your great.
Good evening. My name's Catherine Barrett, and I've been on the Beverly Education Foundation Board now for a dozen years. I'm actually not the high school representative. Our three high school representatives have athletic commitments tonight and banquets, so I'm going to present their awards. The first award is for the BHS PEM Multiple Visit Partnership Grant. We're pleased to support this wonderful partnership project with our BHS AP Art Students and the PBD Essex Museum. The PBD Essex Museum visits allow for in-depth views of collections and special exhibits. The students work with a docent who is able to guide them through the collections. Students are able to work in studio spaces for sketching, writing, and photography. All AP Art students must create a final portfolio, and these visits are used for inspiration. And I'm pleased to award this grant to Mrs. Marini from the BHS Arts Department. The second high school grant is the BODA Borg Experience Grant. BEV Ed is pleased to support the BODA Borg Experience for students in BHS Business and Technology classes, which include web design, video game design, psychology, accounting, personal finance, business law, and business management and globalization courses, DECA. They will use classroom strategies such as problem solving, collaboration, and critical thinking to work their way through the challenges within the BODA Borg. Above all, these students will learn how to deal with failure and how to persevere working across different classes. I'm pleased to award this grant to Drew Redman from the BHS Business and Tech Department. And the last grant is BHS Engineering Equipment Grant. We're pleased to support the BHS Engineering and Robotics Department by assisting with the availability of manufacturing and engineering pieces of equipment. The grant will purchase a lathe, I think that's how you say it. What is a lathe, you ask? A lathe is a machine tool that rotates a workplace about an axis of rotation to perform various operations, such as cutting, sanding, knurling, drilling, deformation, facing, threading, and turning, with tools that are applied to the workplace to create an object with symmetry about that axis. Students from the robotics team, science team, and art classes will also have access to this innovative tool. There will be a dedicated workspace, and students will be introduced to training on its use and the important safety procedures. I'm pleased to award this grant to Mr. Shaw and Mr. Siborowski from the BHS Engineering Department. Principal Thomas is accepting this award on their behalf.
Good evening, everybody. Kate Twombly, and tonight I wear my parent hat as a Beverly Middle School parent to present three grants to our middle school staff. This first grant was really impressive, written in order to diversify and make sure that we are having equitable texts in multi-first languages in this very room for our students who are fluent in their first language and looking for a really juicy read and be able to do that reading right here in their own library. So this diverse foreign language texts, or books, rather, is awarded to Ms. Alex Woznick, who was here earlier, but I think she might have left. I'll give it to Lisa on her behalf. Okay. And these next two grants are somewhat related, but different, so I'll speak to both of them, but they are going to the same person. So this first grant is for the Beverly Middle School Hygiene Initiative to make sure that we are providing equal access to students at the middle school who are in need of hygiene products and making sure that they have those readily accessible. The next one is the creation of a Beverly Middle School thrift store, but not just thrifted goods, but also making sure that students in middle school have access to the most important thing that I think middle schoolers have is their own kind of personal identity through clothing and accessories. And so these two grants are both being awarded to Ms. Kristen Foley. To Ms. Lisa Oliver.
Hello, my name is Sarah Aiello. I am the Ayers representative. But I'm also going to be giving out some grants a little bit out of order. I'll explain why. So over the past few years, as a foundation, we've gotten more and more grants for decodable readers. And so this year, we got four applicants across three schools. So I kind of grouped them together. Strong reading skills are critical for academic success, yet many students struggle with decoding and fluency. Research shows that systematic phonics instruction paired with structured reading practice is key to developing proficient readers. Decodable books offer controlled text that reinforces specific phonics patterns, making them an essential tool for emerging readers. So our recipients this year for decodable readers are North Beverly first grade Holly Staffier, Olivia Buick, and Melanie Coletta. Also, from North Beverly second grade, Julia Hurtin. From Cove, Level 1, Grade 1, Rebecca Hardenstein. And from Ayers, third grade, Level 3 set, Jordan Shimotaro. And then we have two more from Ayers. Promoting early number sense and math fluency at home. This is a continuation of a grant started in 2023 by the Ayers math coach, Alex Tompkins. The kits consist of math games, manipulatives, and materials with the goal of creating a partnership between parents, teachers, and students to encourage math strategies through playing games. The math kit, the math game kits are distributed to all students K through 4. And I'm going to go right into the next one, because it is also a grant written by our math coach, Alex Tompkins. And this is Breakout EDU. Breakout EDU is an innovative approach to learning. It is a game-based learning platform that brings escape rooms into the classroom. Instead of breaking out of a room, students work together to break into a locked box by solving puzzles and games. The Breakout EDU kit includes a variety of materials designed to facilitate physical escape room-style games in the classroom. These are reusable and can be configured to play a wide range of games available on the Breakout EDU platform. And the materials are good for grades K through 4. And so on behalf of Alex Tompkins, I believe, Megan Hart is accepting awards tonight.
Hi, I'm Lisa Kurwell. This is my first year on the board, and if you need volunteers for that escape room, I will come. I love that stuff. So I'm thrilled to represent North Beverly School. I have two boys there as well. And I will be presenting six awards. The first is the Sensory Integration Project. This new initiative provides sensory kits for K through 4 students in the AM program, offering tools like fidgets, headphones, and shoe necklaces. This support helps students self-regulate and participate fully in learning and social activities throughout the day. So I'm happy to award this to Jennifer Kuzmar and Mariola Juckins. I'm not sure if they're here. Oh, congratulations. Oh, you don't. Blow me a kiss. The next award is the Sensory Fitness Space. Designed for all K through 4 students, this grant will create a sensory space with tools like a treadmill, weighted gear, and a squish machine. These resources help neurodivergent learners self-regulate, focus, and thrive, creating a more inclusive, equitable school environment. And this will go to Amy Blanchard. The next award is the Wellness Project. This project introduces personal hygiene. This project introduces personal hygiene lessons and care kits to all fourth graders. With support from counseling, OT, and special education teams, students gain essential life skills that build self-confidence and remove barriers in learning. This award goes, grant goes to Vanessa Norton, Melanie Chandler, and Kelly Beltoff. The next grant is the Growing Social Emotional Book Collection. This grant expands last year's successful SEL book collection for K through four students and staff. The book promotes mental health, family, and relationship building, supporting state health standards, and enriching both classroom learning and home engagement. And this award goes to Claire Rosenbaum. The next grant is the Social Everyday Speech. Using Everyday Speech Platform, this initiative brings consistent culturally responsible SEL instruction to all students. Counselors can focus more on direct support while students build skills like empathy, self-awareness, and responsible decision-making, strengthening school culture and academic success. And this award goes to Kelly Beltoff and Claire Rosenbaum. Sorry, I'm probably mispronouncing. And the last award is the Grade Three Book Club. All third graders will receive diverse level-line books for daily buddy reading. This project builds fluency, comprehension, and peer connection while supporting social emotional growth. And this last award goes to Emily Dawson, Jenny Kelly, and Lori Stansfield, Third Grade. And I think Amy.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Palmersheim. This is my third year being Cove Schools Bevett representative, and I have four grant awards to present tonight. Our first one is called Animal-Assisted Activities Integration. And as part of our school's existing Cove Comfort Pets Project, this grant will help create an integrated animal-assisted activities group, including students of varied ability levels. During this group, students will have the opportunity to see how a mother hen will raise chicks while students learn how to safely interact and help care for them. In addition to the proposed integration group, students are invited to visit and care for all of our school pets during their grade-level morning group, as well as other teacher-approved breaks and classroom visits. The overall goal of this project is to create an inclusive program, providing opportunities for all students in our Cove School community to participate in animal-assisted activities. So this grant was submitted and awarded to Amy King, Cove School's occupational therapist. Our next grant is the Changes Simple Grant, and this grant will continue to help fund a series of visits from the program Changes Simple to educate students on how the choices they make every day can contribute to a sustainable habitat for future generations. Changes Simple teaches how conserving water, managing waste responsibly, and educating and raising awareness contribute to preserving and enhancing local ecosystems. Four hands-on lessons will reinforce academic standards and provide foundational knowledge to join in the fight for our planet. These four programs will be delivered to each of the four fourth-grade classrooms at Cove Elementary School. These programs are tailored to the unique curriculum goals of Cove and are taught alongside the Witten Wisdom Units on Environments and Adaptations Needed to Survive in Extreme or Changing Habitats. And other program content includes energy consumption, availability of natural resources, and reducing the human footprint. And this grant award is going to Doreen Calvani, one of Cove School's fourth-grade teachers. Our next grant is called the Parent Literacy Cafe Grant. So the goal of this grant is to help form relationships with incoming families and engage them in student learning from the get-go. So the school will provide pizza for dinner and set up learning stations where teachers will model different activities for students to do at home. Families will leave this event with kindergarten learning kits, which are funded by this Bevett grant, to support their children at home. So in addition to supporting a focus on student learning, this could prove to be an excellent community event where families form connections with each other and Cove staff. And we hope in the future to replace our traditional fall open house for kindergarten with this fall kindergarten learning night as a parent literacy cafe. So this will allow us to build the community, take homeschool connections, and support student learning earlier in the school year than typical. So this grant is awarded to Heidi Moran, our school literacy coach. All right. Last but not least, the poetry, or the Potato Hill Poetry Grant is our last grant for Cove tonight, and this grant will help fund the Potato Hill Poetry Program at Cove School. This has been going on for several years, and it's a really great program. The goal and objective of the Poetry Cafe and the author visit is to encourage the love of reading and writing through poetry and reinforcing educational literacy standards. The timing of this program is intentional to complement and reinforce the first Witten Wisdom Unit of the school year. So each fourth-grade student participates in five in-class workshops, and students will find their voices by creating poems based on personal experiences. Students learn to carefully choose and arrange language for its meaning, sound, and rhyme, and rhythm. The final activity for this program is absolutely amazing, but it's this really great Poetry Cafe, and it's hosted approximately two weeks after the last author's visit. So hosting the Poetry Cafe allows the student poets to share their work in a safe, supportive environment with the audience of families, students, and teachers, and it's a really fun time. They all wear berets and get up and speak on stage. So this grant is awarded to Jennifer Gilligan, another Cove fourth-grade teacher.
Thank you. There's a lot of schools in Beverly. I'm sorry. So my name is Liesel Hacker. I am the representative for Hannah. And is there anyone from Hannah? Any? No. So I will be presenting and accepting the awards on behalf, I'll just shake my own hand. It was really busy tonight. I guess there was a lot of double bookings. But we have four grants that we're giving out tonight to Hannah. So the first one is for a family steam night at Hannah with Messy Makers, which, for an elementary school, I can't think of anything better than having messy in the title. And they're going to partner with Messy Makers, which is a local business, to do a drop-in steam night, and they're going to do like a mini maker space with recycled materials to create like marble runs and building things to see how tall they can get and stuff like that. So that was written and awarded to our PTO president, Cassie Ballantyne, who's not here, but yay. The second grant is called Hannah Summer Story Hour. So this is to promote foundational literacy skills in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, so our Hannah instructional coaches will design four engaging story hour sessions to take place during the months of July and August. And each session will feature an interactive read aloud, followed by group discussions aimed at enhancing comprehension, language development, and to prevent some learning loss over the summer. They're going to explore themes of friendship, teamwork, problem solving, all while fostering critical thinking and sparking creativity. So they're going to, and it's a partnership with Beverly Library, which is great, and the Bookmobile will be there. Every kid loves the Bookmobile. So that will hopefully be enough to get everybody there. Oh, and they're also going to have some celebrity guest speakers. I'm gonna, I don't, I don't know who that is, but maybe we can give you the report next time. So that was written by our two instructional coaches, Maeve Moore and Marissa Ratai. And then the last two were written by the same rock star fourth-grade teacher that we have at Hannah, and I say that because I'm like wanting to encourage other teachers to always apply. And I say this to everybody, like, please, please, please apply for these grants. We love getting them, and we've seen the numbers go way up since, I've been on the board for, I don't even know, it seems like forever, but I only, my oldest kid's only 12, so it couldn't have been forever. But, but we, when I first started, you know, we only, I don't know, we didn't have as many grants, and they have, I think, tripled in number, but it's so fun for us to read these and see. And like Doug said, it's the most amazing thing to be able to give out money to people to like do these amazing projects that our kids get to benefit from. So please, if you're a teacher, please consider applying in the future. But, so Amy Powers is one of our fourth-grade teachers, and she submitted two, one which is called the Hannah Human Eye Model Project. So she's going to purchase one of those large models of the human eye so that students can really take it apart, understand the various parts of the eye, learn about, you know, how it works with light. And then they're going to make their own model based on the model and present it to the school during a science gallery walk. So that's the Human Eye Project. And the great thing about that is it can be used for years and years and years to come. And then the next one is the Hannah Horticulture. They really, she really did good with the double H's, which is to create two school-community greenhouses outside where students and teachers can grow plants and food, they can look at the organic growing process. She did say she would use organic soil and seeds, so I'm going to check in on that and make sure they're organic. And they're going to research different things and try to grow food that they're actually going to eat and serve to all of the students at Hannah. We'll see how many actually eat them. I want to be there that day, too, when we make all the kids try the vegetables. So those both went to Amy Powers. But thanks. And I think we have one more. Don't, I think this is our, our last two schools. We're almost done. So I can get back to your plethora of meetings. You have so many.
They save the best for last with elementary schools. That's why Centerville is last. I'm just kidding, right, Ms. Smith? I have the privilege of awarding one Centerville Grant to the Preventing Summer Learning Loss with Grab and Go Literacy Kits, which is aimed at preventing regression over the summer in learning and reading. It will provide rising second through fourth-grade students who have been identified based on DIBIL scores with five high-interest books and instructional support and resources for how to become successful independent readers over the summer and will culminate in a celebration upon the return to school. So I am proud to award this grant to Ms. Santa Swasso, Ms. Abate, Ms. Bailey, Ms. Lovell, Ms. Mezza, and Ms. Sullivan. And Julie Smith will. I also have the privilege of awarding a grant to the McEwen Preschool, and this one is for the Squeeze Machine. This will help meet the sensory needs of the students at McEwen, not just the special ed students there, but all students with helping dysregulated students who can access the Squeeze Machine to provide calming and organizing input. It will be available to all students at McEwen, and with training by the occupational therapist staff there, it will also be available to be used by all staff at McEwen. I am proud to award this grant to a special person, my wife, the occupational therapist at McEwen, Marissa Osborne, and the director of special ed, Bethany Spalinski. And I believe that wraps up our grant presentations. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have one more special recognition tonight, and this is for a student, a student who sits with us here at our regular school committee. She's been our student representative for two years so far. Delia Gauker has been an absolute pleasure to work with. She is punctual, and she is informative, and she brings a lot of conversations to us to, through the Student Advisory Committee, and we hope that she might come back another year, but you will be awesome. Even better. Well, thank you for another great year of service. We appreciate it. We appreciate your parents at first driving you, now you, now you drive yourself, and that makes it a little bit more convenient. Thank you so much. We're going to take a brief recess to thank the Bevett folks, to thank our retirees, and then, I know I said we're going to recess, go back to curriculum instruction, we're actually going to recess, come back to this meeting so Delia can give us her student report for the evening because she is doing finals and end-of-year stuff. And then we're going to recess and go back to curriculum instruction so that we can vote items into this meeting and we can take care of business for the night. So with that, motion for recess.
Second.
Second. And all those in favor? We'll be in recess for about five, 10 minutes. Thanks.[1543.11]
...
Okay, welcome back to the regular school committee meeting. Um, the time is 8:36. We'd like, I don't know. It's not, not, not a vote. If our student representative, Delia Gaucker, could give her student report, um, we will then recess this meeting to return to SISIL.
Thank you. Um, on Sunday, June 8th, the class of 2025 graduated at Hertz Stadium. This was following a week of many senior events, including a reach fair to showcase internship projects, graduation rehearsals, senior awards, and clapouts at the elementary and middle schools. Underclassmen students are in their last week of classes this week. Next week, they will have exams. Students will take two exams in the morning, then there is a lunch break. And following the lunch break, there is a chance to make up assignments, meet with teachers, or study for future exams. I also know that the National Honor Society is offering some tutoring programs to help students. Um, on Friday, June 6th, the VHS Jazz Band played with the All City Jazz Band at Lynch Park with many students and community members present. Yeah, um, on Monday, eighth grade students visited VHS with their teams and were given tours by current VHS student volunteers. They will have another event later on before they start to come see the school again. And coming up on Thursday, June 12th, the underclassmen awards will be held in the VHS Fieldhouse. Students receiving an award and their families are invited to this event to celebrate academic achievement. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, thank you for your service. Good luck with your finals next week and we'll see you next year. Thanks. Okay, I'd now like to make a motion to adjourn the regular, uh, sorry, recess the regular school committee meeting so that we can resume the curriculum instruction and student life.
Can I so move that?
You can move that one.
Wonderful.
Second. Oh, I got Kenan McKenzie de Franzes, the second, all those in favor? That passes at 8:38, we are recessed from the regular school committee. If uh, members not on SISIL wouldn't mind standing aside, we will welcome back our teacher representative and Dr. Flaherty's joining back online. I don't know if Katie Kraft and Ryan Redman, if you have been so patient and know, we are now resuming. I'll let Dr. McKenzie call us back to order.
Bringing our meeting back to order for curriculum instruction and student life, I will turn it back over to Dr. Flaherty to bring us along in our agenda. Sure. So we have just heard from our principals on their school improvement plans. Um, and we still have a couple of items for curriculum approvals and a policy matter. Do we have anything else on the agenda, Madam President?
Um, I think we need to hear from our middle school and high school. I just realized I left the table out of the way.
Okay. All right. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Following my middle, my elementary colleagues who just did such a fantastic job, so they are hard, hard, hard to follow. Okay. Here we go with Beverly Middle School. Um, one of our first goals for this past year was looking at math instruction, particularly in grade seven. And our focus was using our new curriculum, not so new anymore, the Reveal Curriculum, and following the identified scope and sequence in making sure that all students had access to our curriculum. Um, we are continuing to partner with TNTP, that's the New Teacher Project. And I know people have heard me talk about them quite a bit. It's actually a free resource from the Department of Education. And we have a coach that comes to the building and works with Jim Grockie, our Director of STEM, and myself. And they push us to think differently. And I feel like we're becoming stronger, both as a leadership team and our teacher team collaboratively due to um, the professional development that we're receiving from TNTP. Um, in terms of growth, we have continued along the same path that you've heard some of the elementary principals speak to. We're using high quality instructional materials, which is the Reveal Curriculum in this particular case. We're continuing with our data meetings three times a year. We're looking at data-driven instruction and looking at student work during content times and during PLC times. And results of that, as of right now, in 23, 24 last year, we had 31% of our students meeting or exceeding on our benchmark data. As of yesterday, um, sorry, 53% of our students are meeting or exceeding. And that's a 22% increase from last year. That shows that some of the strategies that we're using are working. We've had a strong focus on tier one instruction. Uh, this past year, we've had five accelerated math classes, which is fairly typical. Sometimes we have four, this year we had an additional one. And one thing that I just want to take note of, something that TNTP has really um, enmeshed in our work is the use of an internalization protocol, which is really just looking at a math unit and breaking it down and then working backwards. And this is a collaborative process that we do with teachers. Um, they've done some work during the summer, they've done some work during content time, and some work during PLC time. Our second goal is around empowering educators in having high pa, high impact teaching strategies. So again, we're looking at our high quality instructional materials in ELA and in math. Um, because we're a five through eight school, we have a variety. We have ZERN in grade five and then Reveal in grade six through eight for math. And in ELA, we had just finishing a pilot in grade six through eight. This was our first full year with reading reconsidered. And we also have uh, Wit and Wisdom, which follows the trajectory from the elementary buildings. So we've really been looking at scaffolding. Um, and again, this is both math and ELA. And some of the strategies that we're looking at do come from Teach Like a Champion, which is the um, impetus behind our reading strat, uh, reading curriculum in grade six through eight. Um, we're looking at annotating texts, we're looking at close reading. Um, and again, looking at the scaffolding. Other strategies that we're looking at are circulation strategies. Uh, we did have a professional development for all teachers at the beginning of the year. And we focused on things such as show call, um, and again, annotating texts, no, no opt out, all of these. And we've continued these in our content time. Um, as walkthroughs, when we're going in classrooms, one of our goals was to see, hopefully that we had 90% of our teachers looking at some of these strategies and utilizing them. And it's fair to say that that is happening. Our teachers are working really hard and they're implementing these strategies and it is making a difference in our curriculum. Our third goal from last year was expanding civic engagement and focusing in on community service. And so we have some fun activities to talk about here. We do have our grade eight teachers still working on their Action Civics projects, so that's currently in process. Uh, they're working on that as we speak. Um, we have our Green Team that is in motion. Um, our Director of STEM is involved in this process along with Rachel Doring, who is one of our STEM teachers. And they are working in partnership with Green Beverly and also Beverly Bootstraps. And they have collected and donated over 600 pounds of unopened food um, that they have been able to share. We've had some opportunities in grades seven and eight with hallway decorating and there's a voting whole activity that goes along with that. Um, community outreach with fundraising, we are continuing with our Nature's Classroom Trip. There's a lot of behind the scenes work that goes on with that, with our teachers. Our teachers are really leading the charge with that, with our support, very, very strong support from our PTO. Um, we have had grade five teachers visiting um, our preschool and sharing some of the project-based learning work that they're, they're doing. And not only are they sharing it, but they're going to the preschool and actually teaching the, the concepts to them, for example, things around animal adaptations. And then this year, we are in the initial stages, this is, I'm personally very excited about this, of having an advisory to the principal. So we've identified some students. Um, next stage will be at the beginning of the school year. We'll be meeting, I'll be meeting with students, they'll be in eighth grade, so we've identified seventh graders. So our eighth grade, our rising eighth graders will, there's a, there's a number of them. So we have to kind of narrow it down a little bit with the application process because I have about 20 students that are interested. And this is just a way to get more student voice into uh, what we're doing. And so I'm excited to get that up and running. Going forward, uh, we have a focus this year, we really did, had a strong focus on grade seven. We are transitioning to grade eight while still keeping the work that we're doing in grade seven going in the area of math. Uh, we are very fortunate to have our third year with TNTP next year. And we're also, I know Mr. Thomas will talk about this too, but we're also expanding this to the high school, which is going to help with our transition from the middle school to the high school. Um, we have the same coach, we're doing a lot of work this summer. Um, we have created an ILT for our grade eight and nine math teachers. So they'll be working collaboratively together and really be, be leading some of this work. Um, our second goal is enhancing writing skills. Uh, that's very strong feedback from the staff, that that's an area that we need to work on. Um, originally, we were looking at expanding writing across the content areas. Um, however, with feedback and more ta, and more talking with teachers, we believe that we really need to strengthen the ELA, um, writing rubrics and vertical alignment in the ELA classes while slowly expanding that out to the content areas. And then last but not least, we're going to continue to work on our inclusive climate, uh, school climate and culture where we're prioritizing high academic and behavior expectations. Um, while also, while also um, keeping ourselves data-driven at a high standard and using culturally responsive practices.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver, is any questions? I don't know if we still have anybody online.
Yeah, we're still joined by Ryan Redman and I believe Katie Kraft.
Terrific.
Any questions?
It's Robinson.
Did you say that program was free?
Yes. Yeah, TNTP, it's through the Department of Ed and there is no charge to the district. And it's amazing.
And it, yeah, they are, the quality of people they send have been outstanding.
Very impressive. Thank you.
I actually had a question from a couple of BMS math teachers that were basically asking about uh, feedback from TNTP. Basically, um, is there a way, or does TNTP offer personalized feedback? That's the, from what I've been told by math educators in grades five through eight, they haven't received any personal feedback. And I think that that's a thing that they would really appreciate. It's very much in line with the, the goal of empowering educators so that they can take a good look at how they can improve their practice themselves.
Yeah. I think that's an excellent point. Um, they are giving feedback, but it's coming through uh, our Director of STEM. So to share, what happens is when there is a site visit, um, we meet with TNTP, they give us feedback, we have discussion about it. And then typically what's been happening is our Director of STEM has been meeting with our math teachers and giving them direct feedback.
Are there any questions from online?
I don't see any hands up.
Thank you, Mrs. Oliver.
Thank you so much.
Very busy year.
Yes, thank you.
And you're going to hang around, correct?
Yes, I am.
And Mr. Thomas, next year, I'm going to recommend they start with the high school, so you don't always end up at the end.
I've heard that before.
We did last year, you had to come back a second night, so.
Okay, um, I'd like to start off by talking about a few celebrations, accomplishments. Um, probably the thing most notable and um, the thing I'd like to point out in um, this really shines a light on um, the good work our teachers are doing with our awesome students. But uh, we, we made gains in our accountability percentile, um, the largest that, as far as I could go back. Um, double-digit gains, um, and that goes back at least a decade. Uh, that, that's the biggest gain we've had. So um, from 36, uh, from a percentile of 36 last year to 48 this year. So from 36, from a percentile of 36 last year to 48 this year. So looking to keep that moving in a good direction. Noted gains in achievement for ELA on MCAS, and then growth in both ELA and math. In MCAS, we gained a maximum amount of points in those areas. Continued work with our EL population around their growth, along with chronic absenteeism, where other areas that we were able to gain a lot of points in the accountability measures. So all that together really propelled us to some nice gains over the last year. As far as our different pathways, and different paths to post-secondary plans we offer, along with traditional paths, offering our after-doc programs with North Shore Tech and Salem. We continue that, Salem was year two this year, and are ongoing with the tech. We also have our career pathways. We have six within the high school, three are identified through our innovative career pathways through the state. And we're in progress of an early college pathway, we're in the planning stage. We should be finding out, any day I was hoping before this meeting, but finding out if we got the next step, the next phase of that grant. As far as AP enrollment, we continue to have a nice, robust course offering with 17 within our traditional classes, along with eight online this year in varied subjects. But we hit an all-time high of individual tests by more than, more than 100 from our previous high mark last year. So over five, at 599 individual tests offered for AP this year. So many of those were students taking multiples, but 599 individual tests. So we're really proud of the engagement of our students in those, the coursework. And then going into, yep, you can go forward, as far as our school improvement goals for this year, as I talked about at length in meetings previous, we looked at some working on our unleveling within the ninth grade freshman academy, and really looking at our best practices within that. We worked with Seaside Educational Consultants to develop those best practices around differentiation and co-teaching. As I said to this committee, or actually to the committee of the whole, two months ago, I did make a decision to delay the pursuit of homogeneous classes across the ninth grade. From, from that end, the way I look at it is, I look at the school as a whole, trying to make the best decisions for our students, and turn our faculty, and turn the high school, and decided that it was not the right time to continue to pursue and to put our efforts in a couple of the directions during, what was a tumultuous year at times, so. And so going into this, whether the, whether unleveling ninth grade went through or not, I knew working on this stuff was good for our, good for our students at the end result, where anytime we're looking at how we use a class period and the instructional practices within, that's going to result in positives for our students. So we were, we were happy with that outcome. As far as our pilot for preserving democracy, we did run a successful pilot course. It was a small group this year with that one pilot course. The feedback we got overall was positive from our students. It was a small sample size, but the overall was positive in recommending that other students take it. They enjoyed the course itself. So Sadie, who's, who was our rep here, was one student in that class. So I said, if she's here, I might call on her, but that's okay. So, yeah, there you go. And then our third is celebrating groups representative of our, of our population, of our student body. And we, we made an effort to recognize all groups representative of, of our student population through, not only just noting different, different months and really spelling that out for people on our, on our virtual announcements and that type of thing. We also planned different events. We had Dr. Mackenzie DeFranz at one, we had the cattle car exhibit, just last week, we had the pride flag raising. We'll have the Juneteenth flag raising next week. So, you know, really trying to engage students in different ways, not only just pointing out that there's specific months that are celebratory, but also engaging them in different modes of engagement, which, you know, we were happy with this year. Going forward, I've kind of molded last year's goal with the unleveling more towards focused on improving discourse within our classes, specifically our ninth grade math classes, as Ms. Oliver talked about, where we're working on some vertical alignment there. So tying that in, and then really trying to work on written and verbal discourse within those classes and using academic language throughout. Our goal number two is continue with our pilot of preserving democracy. We'll be expanding that to two to three sections of that. And that's, what I'd note in that is, the only students that would really be taking that this year are current seniors, with the thought that in the fall of next year, we'll be full-on implementation, where it's a graduation requirement for what will be our current juniors. So our current sophomores moving into junior year, when they're seniors, that will be a graduation requirement. So we're trending in a great direction there and expanding the teachers that are teaching that course. Goal number three is continuing on that same path of celebrating groups that are representative of our student population. So continuing that work and just growing that overall kind of repertoire of different modes of engagement for our students.
Are there any questions for Mr. Thomas? Mr. Robinson?
Just on the AP courses, I know that a couple of years ago, we opened up, was it Human Geography and Psychology for freshmen? I was just wondering how the enrollment is for younger students in those classes?
So we've definitely seen our, we call those OnRamp AP courses, and we've definitely seen a trend in that direction. And I can get you hard numbers on that, but no, we've definitely seen that improvement, especially in the sophomore year. And, but we have seen some freshmen take it as well, so.
Mr. Thomas, didn't you, didn't you get recognized for the increase of the number of students taking AP?
Yeah, so that was AP distinct, AP honor roll or AP distinction, something along those, yeah, so, so it's a nice little banner inside our front foyer, so.
Any other questions? Thank you. We're spending a lot of time at the high school in the last few weeks between end of the year and graduation and walkthroughs, and it's just been a really positive year, and thank you for all your work at the high school.
Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Thomas is going to stay there for our next item on the agenda. Mr. Thomas is going to be coming forward with some information, and we're going to recommend the adoption of, really, this isn't a curriculum, it's a resource, it's an online component that they can use with their current resources. But I will turn it over to you, Mr. Thomas.
Yeah, so starting with culinary, this was, this was teacher recommended from one of our culinary teachers to support their existing curriculum. So we're able to provide that resource, and it's something that the students can, can kind of log into and work through and as support to their lab. So that's, that's something that we think will get a lot of value and a lot of good work out of our students for.
You can see on the left, this is from the online subscription login page, but it does allow, it does provide curriculum units if the teacher chooses to use them, and there's a lot of tasks and skills, especially around knife, knife and cutting and stuff like that. But it also provides recipes that they could use within the class. And so this is just an online subscription.
Right.
And then our second recommendation is for wellness and fitness curriculum.
Yeah, so as you may or may not know, there's a new set of standards for wellness that came out this year. So we've been working with, with two consultants from the Massachusetts Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance throughout the year to align that curriculum, and it's, it's been an awesome experience. They've been great, and our teachers have done a lot of good work there to really align what we have. But one thing that we've, we've talked about for some time, and especially through this process, is to have a streamlined curriculum or a through-line curriculum for specifically health, and then more resources for wellness, as far as skill enhancement and activities. So this, this really encompasses that. Our, to be quite honest, our teachers, as we work through this, really had a difficult time finding something that fit what we were looking for. And through the, through a recommendation of the consultants, they, they were able to point us in this direction. Teachers looked at it, felt like this was, this was something that really supported what we wanted to do and where we wanted to go with things. So that's why I bring it forward here.
And I think that one of the things, one of your bullets and that we've talked about is, especially being a former health teacher, the, the importance, especially in the society that we're in today, having a consistent curriculum that is the same for all teachers and all kids, at least for the exposure piece and for resources, is an important.
Yeah, huge challenge. A huge challenge they've faced over the years is having to piecemeal stuff together, and this alleviates that, and they're excited to have that through line, so.
Ms. Abel.
Yeah, for the culinary, I heard there's an online component and a student access component. Is this?
This is a digital.
This is also a digital provided platform with student access. Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Thomas?
Sorry about that. I actually have a couple of statements from the Culinary Arts Department in the high school and from the middle school Wellness Department that I'd love to read.
Middle school, we're going to take separate, that's going to be in a minute. This is just about high school right now.
So would it be okay if this is a good time for the culinary one?
The culinary one, yes.
If you don't mind, yeah. First, thank you for, this is actually directly from the Culinary Arts, let me hear. "Thank you for taking the time to consider an online supplemental curriculum for Culinary Arts. Due to the nature of our program, it is often difficult to find a curriculum that will fit within the confines of our time and ability, as we are not in, as we are not in official vocational program. We are grateful that the city continues to appreciate the importance of a life skill such as Culinary Arts, and recognizes that the students benefit greatly from our program. We have worked hard over the years to develop curricula and a program that is both robust, comprehensive, and skills-based. While we understand very few students that come through our program will pursue a career in hospitality field, a large percentage of the students will have a job where they work with food or in a customer service in their high school or college years. Having the proper skills to not only be safe in a kitchen, but work efficiently and quickly as part of a team, will set these students apart when it comes to applying for a job. Next year, due to a position in our department not being filled due to retirement, we find ourselves in an interesting situation. First, we were told the International Foods Course will not be offered, which students had signed up for and did not run this school year due to American regional foods being offered. Second, multiple foreign language teachers who are not certified or trained in the skills have been approached about teaching a total of four sections of our foundations class. It appears that there was enough interest to run a full schedule of Culinary Arts courses, so it is unclear to us why the job was not posted and filled by someone with proper certification. A third teacher was added three years ago to our department, and a new course was designed just last year due to the popularity of these electives. Almost all 32 sections of Culinary Courses this year were at max enrollment. Culinary Arts Courses are essentially a lab every day. There is an incredible amount of setup, preparation, and planning that goes into teaching these courses. For someone who is not trained in Culinary Arts and does not have the proper time in their schedule to prep, it is going to be a logistical nightmare. In each culinary room, there are--
So can I ask you?
Yeah, sure.
What is this? I haven't heard a question about curriculum yet.
So I, I think the--
Because I'm not going to comment on personnel stuff.
Fair enough, I understand. They wanted to ask a question with some context for where this appears.
I'm just wondering about a question.
Totally understand. "In each culinary room, there are four kitchens, which means there are five to six high school students in each kitchen preparing one recipe. It is a delicate balancing act to manage behaviors while ensuring that safety remains a top priority. I can only imagine how challenging and stressful this will be for someone rushing down the hall when the bell rings in a crowded hallway. We also have questions about how and when these teachers will be trained to teach the necessary, skills necessary for these courses. To assume that any teacher can simply walk into a classroom and do the job of someone trained and certified is quite frankly insulting. Other questions that arise: Will we have any common planning time? Will these new teachers be expected to assist with our daily duties like laundry, cleaning and organizing the kitchens, inventory, food, and equipment ordering? Is this new curriculum being approved specifically to help staff members who are not trained to teach these courses? If so, is the plan to continue to shuffle teachers around to various electives they are not trained to teach? While we are, while we understand that a teacher can teach 20% outside of their certification area, the question must be asked: Is this the best use of the teacher's time and abilities? We appreciate your consideration on these concerns and are available for any further discussion about our program."
So I didn't hear a questionable curriculum in there.
I think the question about the curriculum is broadly speaking focused on whether or not these, the actual Culinary Arts Department will be expected to bring the other teachers who will be teaching this curriculum up to speed to, without common planning time?
Yeah. I think, I don't want to interrupt, but tonight, the, the decision is just about whether to purchase the curriculum or not.
Fair enough, I understand. At the same time, I think this was, this is the concern that the teachers have, and I guess the question would be, in terms of approving the curriculum, is the expectation that teachers are going to be asked to teach teachers, I think, maybe is--
It's a resource.
Merely a resource.
Strictly a resource, and if there's professional development that's needed, Mr. Thomas will handle that for the individual teacher. It wouldn't be expected for another teacher to teach them.
Fair enough, cool. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mrs. Abel.
Yeah, so for the culinary curriculum, I understand that there's an online component for the students, which is pretty exciting. I have one student that really has enjoyed going through different culinary classes and started lifting the burden at home, and yeah, it's been good, it's been good.
Real-life learning, that's--
Yeah, real-life learning. And I appreciate the fact that the program did, in fact, help her get a food service job and had the experience and confidence to go into that. I do wonder, however, and I think Mr. Fiore mentioned, there's a lot of interest in this area, and, and I know that it has been an area where we have a limited amount of stove and counter space and setups and all of that. I, I do wonder what the right balance is between some of our core academics and thinking about how we are looking for rigorous instruction, but also instilling the joy of learning and having practical life skills. The, the vision of our graduates is to have students that are ready for whatever's next, whatever is next. And so with this curriculum, I do wonder if it provides an opportunity for students who have a big interest to go beyond the curriculum assigned in the classroom, to explore the other topics at their own pace. I have a student that took an online course this year because the, the Level Three of a foreign language wasn't offered. And I think that students that get engaged in a subject because it's a passion for them and start that curiosity, that lifelong learning, really would benefit from having full access and not necessarily just this topic picked out or this topic picked out for the classroom setting. And so I guess my, my curiosity is, it's a resource for teachers to supplement what the classroom is already doing, but does it provide a jumping-off point for our students who have a deeper passion and may not be able to fit culinary in their schedule every year, every semester?
So, so this is not an online class, like a virtual class that we use in other aspects? This is simply a resource for the culinary teachers? So it, it wouldn't satisfy necessarily what you're suggesting?
Okay. So there's still a place for some of those online apps, those booty apps then? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, this is, we would be looking for a motion to approve the culinary and wellness curriculum for Beverly High School. curriculum for Beverly High School.
Typically, we get to understand the cost. I think that we have a responsibility for that and where the funding would come from.
The, this is coming from, um, two, two areas. One will be appropriated curriculum money. The other for culinary and is gonna be coming out of the Title IV, um, but, uh, grant. The subscription is a thousand dollars. Um, and the wellness curriculum for, um, a two-year license, it was gonna be just over twelve thousand dollars, but the best, um, financial package was to do a six-year license and it's just over seventeen thousand. Is that correct, Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
One last question. Do you want the motion separately or together?
I think it could be together if you wanted, but if you wanna make them separate, that's fine as well. We will have another one for the middle school, but that will be separate.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the wellness curriculum and the culinary curriculum supplement programs as described by Dr. Flaherty this evening, uh, for a recommendation to the full school committee.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, could we call a roll?
I'm just checking online to see if our resident reps have any questions about the curriculum before we call the roll. I don't see any hands.
Okay. I'll call the roll. Uh, Ms. Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Rachel Abell?
Yes.
Oh, we don't have our student anymore. Casey Fiore?
Yes.
And I'm Kenia McKenzie de Franza, yes, and we will turn to our online.
Ryan Redmond?
Yes.
And Katie Kraft?
Yes.
Motion is passed. We will take that up on our next agenda, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas? Thank you very much. Sorry, thank you for that. Okay, our next item is for a pilot at the middle school, which would be for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year. Um, as you all are aware, as, um, school committee members, uh, at the end of the year, sometimes we end up with some, um, extra money, some money that, um, because of some good renewal costs that we got, we had some extra money in the curriculum line item, um, that we didn't anticipate due to, um, positive, um, renewal expenditures. Um, this kind of came as we were doing all of our, um, end-of-the-year renewals. So, we found out last Thursday that we did have a, um, pool of money. We have two areas in all of the curriculum areas that I had hoped that we could, um, address that, um, still remained, um, unfulfilled. One was middle school wellness curriculum. The other area was the middle school foreign language program. Um, and so, when I knew that this was, um, made available and that we had already begun work, uh, the middle school has just started the work with the same organization that the high school has worked with all year. Um, so, for the next school year, they will be working with the Mass Association of Health, Physical Education, and Recreation and Dance, um, to align their curriculum to the new, um, wellness standards. And they are the ones that recommended this program and that we knew that this curriculum went down for grades six through twelve. So, they do have a middle school program for grades six through eight. I called and asked Lisa if she thought that, um, she would, her staff would want to have a, uh, curriculum resources to work with the consultants so that they could explore it. It's a one-year pilot so that they can explore the resources. They can also have it as a resource while they're working with the consultants. They do, really do not have any curriculum resources, um, and they're very out of date for what they are using now. Um, and so, she was very excited about that. She had sent it out to, um, her teachers to take a look at, but unfortunately, with the short turnaround, it was, I think, construed that this was gonna be just kind of pushed on people, that this would be the curriculum that was moving forward. And that's not the case. It's a pilot so that they would have the opportunity to work with the consultants using these resources. They may love them, they may wanna explore other areas, and that's what next year will be all about. And then, um, next spring, you would make a long-term commitment as to what they would use moving forward. There is a separate, um, health curriculum and then also the fitness and skills piece. That is the same as the high school curriculum because it's the same for grades six through twelve. The comprehensive health is, um, specific for the middle school and it is aligned to mass frameworks, which in, in and of itself is an enormous time-saving for teachers to not have to do the alignment piece. Um, all of the standards are there with what is being offered as resources. So, we're bringing this forward as a, um, a pilot for just one year. The, um, cost for the fitness piece, I believe, is around seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. That's the brown one on the bottom. And then, the green one, I can log out of this and get the exact amount, but the quotes just came in today and I believe it was just over four thousand dollars for one year. Um, and some of this will also be taken from Title IV and the curriculum savings and the appropriated budget. Um, I did have a conversation with Ms. Sherman to assure her that this is being brought forward as a resource for people to, as we do with any pilot, explore for the first year, um, to use where they see fit, um, or when they're working with the consultant to go back, um, and use before the next meeting. Uh, it's not something that's expected is gonna be fully implemented for September first. It's just a resource and tool. And as I said, they've been clamoring for resources because they're very outdated for the ones that they've been using. So, it is, um, my recommendation, supported by Mrs. Oliver, um, that we move forward and supply our wellness teachers with some up-to-date resources that are aligned to the frameworks for a pilot for the twenty-five, twenty-sixth school year.
I'll make a motion, um, that we pass along the recommendation from the superintendent and, uh, assistant superintendent and principal to adopt for a one-year pilot, the wellness curriculum as outlined by Dr. Flaherty this evening.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Are there any questions? I think Casey, you said you had a few questions.
Uh, I did, but actually, you, your, your explanation clarified for me, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking online to see if our resident representatives have any questions about this one-year pilot for the middle school. Not seeing any hands.
And I would say also, by being a former health, health teacher, uh, I'm very excited that we are able to finally provide some up-to-date and current resources for our teachers. Okay, I think I'll call the roll. Okay. Uh, Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Rachel Abell?
Yes.
Casey Fiore?
Yes.
Kenia McKenzie de Franza, yes. And anyone online?
We have Ryan Redmond?
Yes.
And Katie Kraft?
Yes.
And I would just add, um, as an aside, Mrs. Oliver and I have also talked about the fact in the fall, we would wanna put together a pilot team for foreign language to, um, explore what the high school has been using, which has been very successful as one option, but they can also look for other resources that they might wanna explore next year, um, and come forward with a recommendation because they are also the, the, kind of the last of the wave of content areas that need to be updated. Thank you. So, our motion, we just made, passes, I believe?
Yeah, it passed sixes.
So, we can make that recommendation to the larger body?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, finally, we had one policy that was still, um, we had sent back for some further review. This was sent to you, um, as well. And what we are recommending is, um, a small update by, uh, you can see the red line taking that language out and including the highlighted language, which would read, "Use of any product made or derived from tobacco," which was one of the areas that we wanted to make sure got, um, expanded. "Containing nicotine from any source that is intended for human consumption, including any component, part, or accessory of a tobacco product." This has been, um, reviewed and, um, uh, recommended by both Dr. Silva and Jody Elder.
I'd like to make a motion that we move forward to the school committee, the approved revisions, um, or sorry, the revisions recommended by the nurse leader and our school physician.
Second. The motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion or questions? If not, can we call a roll? Looking for that language. I don't see it in my email. For the proposed language is the, it's right here. We're gonna strike the red language with the line through it. It's linked at the top of the slide. And we're doing the highlighted change. It really, what it really does is it broadens, um, the definition of a tobacco product to include anything that contains nicotine. All right, thank you. I just don't see it in the packet. That's what I was looking for. It was sent supplementary to, I think she sent it yesterday. Okay, so, okay, thank you. So, it's a way, outside of that. Just wanna make sure we have it. All right, thank you. Um, so, we have that recommendation, we have the language, um, so, and we didn't have any discussion on that?
We have a motion and a second, and we're looking for discussion. I don't see any hands online. I think, ready for a roll?
Okay, I'll call the roll. Uh, Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Rachel Abell?
Yes.
Casey Fiore?
Yes.
Kenia McKenzie de Franza, yes, and online?
Ryan Redmond?
Yes.
And Katie Kraft?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. So, we will make that recommendation for the updated language. And I'd just end by thanking, um, all of you for the time that you put into SISL. It's been a very busy year, um, and it's been a powerful year of teaching and learning as we are walking through the schools. And what we're, what we're seeing is so exciting and, um, this takes a lot of time that a lot of people don't have. And so, we thank you for the time and effort you put in for what I think is the most important work we do. And as I, as I prepare to say goodbye, I, um, am most proud of the work that we've accomplished through this committee. And with the help of Esser Money, we've really made a, uh, an impact for many, many years to come from updating our curriculum and providing professional development to our teachers to strengthen instruction. And I hope that you'll always think of that as maybe my legacy or my most important impact to the district as I leave. So, thank you all very much for what you do. And thank you, Dr. Flaherty.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Flaherty. I was gonna say, before I make a motion to adjourn, I wanna thank you. I think you really elevated the, the level of detail in the slides with the videos and the links and so many resources. And thank you for bringing so many topics to this group. I know, um, my time on SISL is, this is kind of a newer committee for me. I used to be on finance and facilities and I think you've really educated me personally, um, in all the areas of curriculum, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll make the motion to adjourn this standing committee so that we can return to our other committee.
Second.
Thank you. I think you can call the roll.
Ooh, I'm gonna call the roll. Thank you for hanging in there, everybody. Uh, Karen Robinson?
Yes.
Rachel Abell?
Yes.
Casey Fiore?
Yes.
I'm Kenia McKenzie de Franza, yes.
Ryan Redmond?
Yes.
And Katie Kraft?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Flaherty.
Never, never done a nine-twenty-four curriculum. Thank you so much. Bev Cam, we're going to give one minute to get our other school committee colleagues back to the table. Okay, welcome, everyone. I'm resuming the regular school committee for Beverly Public Schools. The time is nine-twenty-five. Uh, our next agenda item is the approval of the meeting records from our May fourteenth budget hearing and our school committee meeting. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So, move.
Thank you, Ms. Visnick.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Quelo. And just to clarify, I'm gonna do them as a group. Were there any edits or corrections to either set of meeting records? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six-zero. Motion is passed. At this time, slightly later than normal, we have an open forum for resident voice on input related to agenda-related items or non-agenda-related items. People that were interested in providing resident voice tonight were allowed the opportunity to sign up in advance at residentvoice@beverlyschools.org. And we ask that, um, these comments be limited to less than three minutes. Um, at this time, I don't believe we had any sign-ups. Was there anyone here that was here to speak?
Nope.
Okay, moving right along. Our next item on the agenda is our items by consensus. These are the warrants that are listed on our agenda. Warrants A, B, C, D, and E, and the dollar amounts are posted. I'm looking for a motion to approve.
So, move.
Thank you, Mary Cahill. Thank you, Ms. Visnick. On, um, these, are there any questions or typically are not? All those in favor? We're paying our bills tonight. Okay, there we go. Six-zero at nine-twenty-seven. Um, what's that?
Who's the second?
Oh, on the second was Larinda. Cahill, Visnick, thank you. Um, and then, superintendent, you have some fun items for us?
I do. And hopefully, since we just saw a lot of them, we'll go pretty quickly.
That's what I'm hoping.
My very first, uh, I have a few items we're gonna hear, um, about an overnight field trip to France, um, and from the high school. We have, and then, these are approvals that are follow-ups from that last meeting that we just did, the Student Parent Handbook, Wellness Curriculum, Culinary Curriculum, and the BMS Curriculum Approvals. But we just went through them all, so we'll probably be able to go pretty quickly through that. So, first, I would like to welcome Catherine Spolstra to the microphone, and I'm sorry we couldn't get you in sooner, but she is gonna talk to us about a, um, a BHS overnight field trip to France. Superintendent recommends the approval of a proposed BHS overnight field trip to France, including Paris, Provence, Provence?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not French. Nice, I think that's right, and Monaco. Um, and this is for February of twenty-sixth, so take it away. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. So, I'm Catherine Spolstra. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the French teacher at BHS. Um, I would like to propose a trip to France, as Dr. Trocheck said, for this coming February. I would like to have it open to current and former BHS French students, so even students who won't be taking French next year but have taken French, uh, would like to invite them to participate. Um, I'm really excited about doing this because I think it's, it's very important for the students to see that they can actually use their language. Right now, it's confined to a classroom, of course, um, but I think it'll be very important and exciting for them to get to experience that they can actually use it and it's not just in my classroom. Um, so, as Dr. Trocheck said, we would be starting in Paris, um, spending a couple days there, seeing, uh, you know, the, the big sites, uh, including the Musée d'Orsay, the Louvre, um, lots of art, of course, and then going down to Provence for a little more history, um, some Roman history in Avignon to see the Pont du Garde, as well as then going to Nîmes, um, to see the Roman arena there, and also the, uh, Musée de la Romanité, so museum about, you know, Roman history and, Nîmes and Avignon are both very rich in Roman history. So, Nîmes also is, is pretty cool because that's where denim gets its name from. I don't know if you knew that, but it, Nîmes, de Nîmes, means from Nîmes, so denim. Thought that was a cool tidbit. Um, so, I think that will be cool also for them to see. And then, we would be going to Nice and then to Monaco. Of course, you know, it will be February, so it won't be super, super warm to enjoy the beach, um, there, but they'd still get to see that. And then, go over to Monaco and tour, uh, the, one of the perfume factories there. Um, so, lots of history, lots of art, and of course, my favorite thing being, um, getting to practice their language skills, uh, with real, you know, native French speakers and getting the cultural experience of being outside of their own country, which I think also is, is very important for them to experience other cultures. Um, so, we have, honestly, the, the vast majority of the world language standards would be, um, practiced during this trip, especially interpersonal communication and cultural competence. Um, those two, you know, definitely being the biggest ones. Before we go on the trip, I would love to have three sessions for students, one- One, to kind of get them acquainted with some of the cultural knowledge and phrases, useful phrases, that they will need to know for being there. As well as another one to get to know the monuments, location knowledge, sort of geography, that type of thing. And then finally, to get familiar with the art that they are going to see. Because there's quite a few museums on that list. I would be bringing along with me Dr. Orr, Missy Orr, to be my second chaperone. We would need 20 students for a private tour. So if, if we aren't to be combined with another school, we would need 20 students. We will need at least five to cover the cost of me chaperoning and then 11 to cover the, the cost of the second chaperone. I'm, I'm hoping that we'll get at least 20. I think this trip has a lower price point than the, the one that we tried to, to run this year. So I think it will be more accessible to people. I'm also hoping to work with Missy on doing some fundraising first thing, starting in the fall when we come back to school, which also hopefully will make it more accessible to students. Yeah, can I answer any questions?
Can I, can I throw a motion on the table?
Yep.
To begin? Motion to approve?
Second. Go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
So how many, how many French students are at the, at the high school now?
I have about 100 this year. Yeah, and, and I teach six classes usually. And then there's two other sections normally. So about 140 perhaps?
That's great.
Yeah.
And where will they stay? I don't have my, I don't have anything open.
Yeah, so the tour company that we would be using is ACIS, which several different teachers have used before. They will book travel, you know, hotels and everything like that. So we'll stay in different places. I believe it's usually like three-star hotels. They're always in pretty central locations, so it's easy to get wherever we're going.
Ms. Visnick?
This is a very standard question for me. Are you taking with you someone who's like a registered nurse? Or what's the, what is, how do you plan to handle that? As last I checked, Dr. Orr, which is fantastic. I think this is the first time we've announced her as Dr. Orr, which is absolutely fantastic, but she's not that kind of a doctor, right? So what, what's your plan for nursing?
Yes, so the plan is in the fall, once we have more of a list, to send it over to the nurses. And the nurses will tell us, based on having the, you know, access to their health records, whether or not we need one of them to come with us.
And we assume that, that they'll be available to go with you? Or like what, what happens if we can't send one? Is there a Rinta nurse program for field trips?
I, that's a great question.
I think our former public health nurse might be, no, I don't, I won't sign her up, but...
You're signing people up.
I'm going to sign her up. She would love it.
Yes, but I, I can definitely, for sure, look into that. I, I would hope, you know, it wouldn't be too hard to find somebody to go to France, but you, you never know. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Dr. McKenzie de Franza?
Just a quick question. Curious about fundraising opportunities and how we make sure that more students who might need more time to assemble the resources have it? Like, are there opportunities already scheduled or planned?
Not yet. It was kind of pending approval. For the fundraising, I'm going to be working a lot with Dr. Orr because she has experience with it. I have not hosted any fundraisers yet. So she, I think, will be very helpful to me with that. Oh, yes, please.
So what we've typically done with trips abroad when fundraising comes into play is the reason we, we start out so early in the fall, you know, out that far is to give ample opportunity. But then, as funds are raised, it's dispersed amongst all students involved. And so it's, it's not deciding which is which or that type of thing. So we make sure it's equitably dispersed among all students going to lower the price point for all.
Thank you.
Did I see your hand, Mayor Cahill?
Please.
Go, go ahead.
Je suis désolé. Vous êtes ici encore à presque 22 heures de nuit. Moi, je suis pas médecin, mais si vous avez besoin d'un chaperone, je suis ici.
Merci beaucoup. Je vais vous garder dans mon cerveau là. Merci.
Oh, la la.
I, I am aiming to be a chaperone, sorry.
But Donna was having trouble with the minutes.
Je ne peux pas parler français très bien, mais... Yeah, oh yeah. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of sending some students to France? And some teachers? Okay, enjoy the trip. I hope you get the interest. And let us know how we can support your fundraising efforts because we would love to send all 20 students. That sounds great.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for waiting. Sorry about that. All right. All right, so the, the next, these are all recommendations as we go through. So, and I, I know Dr. McKenzie de Franza would be likely going through them all with her report, but I wrote them up so that I knew we would be sort of on a time crunch. So we can go through, in our SISIL meeting this evening, we had four areas, four items that we put up that we have recommendations from SISIL. And so the Student Handbook is, is one of the items that we need to approve before the end of the school year for the start of the next year. So the Superintendent recommends the approval of the revised elementary, middle school, and high school handbooks. These recommendations were generated through the individual school councils and it has been reviewed and recommended by SISIL.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Likewise, the Superintendent recommends the adoption of the Comprehensive Health Skills for High School and the Fitness Wellness Skills Curricula. Selection was through the wellness team at the high school with consultation services during the '24-'25 school year, and it has been reviewed and recommended by SISIL.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion on this recommendation that comes out of SISIL? All those in favor?
The Superintendent recommends the adoption of the Culinary Curriculum by Ruby. And that was also requested by the culinary teachers and reviewed and recommended by SISIL.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Mayor Cahill, Ms. Robinson, any questions? All those in favor? Six zero?
God, if it was this easy all the time. And the, the final one is the Superintendent recommends the approval of a pilot program for health and wellness for the middle school utilizing comprehensive health skills for high school. That, at middle school, sorry, that should have said middle school. And the Fitness and Wellness Skills Curricula for the '25-'26 school year. This will be a pilot program to be utilized by the middle school wellness team.
So moved.
Thank you. I'll second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
And that is all I have for you this evening.
Okay, and for our school committee, I just want to remind us all that a summer retreat with Dr. Peter Cushing?
C, Dr. C.
Dr. C. I know, it, it's already in my Outlook calendar for meetings with Dr. C. I don't think we could reasonably pick a date and time, but I do have at least one topic from Dr. McKenzie de Franza already. And I did have a conversation with Dr. Cushing, and we have a couple other potential topics. But if members have anything that they think is suitable for the retreat and/or if you could give me your availability towards the end of July, beginning of August, is, is the timeline. Dr. Cushing has a number of things he has to accomplish in district. And then he has some MASs commitments as the new superintendent program gets underway. And I think we're looking end July, beginning August. Please email the chair. And CC Donna, she keeps me straight. And then, in our packets for our second reading, these are the policies that we discussed a little bit in advance in our committee of the whole. These are policies about how we operate here at the table. For the packet tonight, I did incorporate the additional track changes and highlights that were comparing the two different versions. Again, we're looking to make updates to all of our policies to reference residents versus citizens and to make gender neutral some items. I think that the differences between the MASs policy and the Beverly policy are pretty negligible. But one area that I just wanted to, to run by everyone is that we are looking at, in the BEDH, about public comment, and BEDHE, public comment guidelines. And in BEE, the special procedures for our public hearings. And there's a slight difference in our language. As I alluded to last time, during COVID, the chair added to the agenda an option for emailing comments in advance. However, that is not consistent with our policy, and it's a practice that probably should end tonight, seeing as we had no one email. I don't think it's a, a practice that would be too hard to break. I don't think we've had it in the last three or four meetings, in fact. And so as we think forward to the fall, I think the agenda item does need to revert back to our policy unless someone was bringing forward any amendments to the policy beyond the track changes that are presented. And with that, I open it up to see if, as a group, we want to approve them as marked or if we want to take them individually.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Visnick?
I, I feel like procedurally, we have set this new kind of expectation. And so if we go back to what our policy actually said, do we have a, maybe a, an idea of how to reset the expectations? To, right, that, that we were, we were doing this other thing and we're reading in, right?
Yeah, but I, I think there was only a couple of meetings where we had that interest for people to read in. In fact, at our public hearing, two people had sent emails in case they couldn't be here. And then, in the end, they ended up speaking on their own behalf. So it didn't even, I don't want to say matter. But the policy, as it's written, people should be emailing us in advance of the meetings or immediately after the meetings, and we should be reading the constituent emails. As members, they, there's nowhere in the policy or even in Mass General Law that says we should be reading emails into...
I understand that to be true. So what I'm saying is that as we move forward and we go, we revert back to what our policy actually says versus what we were doing for a practice. On some number of occasions, you read letters into the record and you read them to all of us. That was very nice of you. I, I just don't want another, another spot where people would complain that we're not doing something that we had been doing earlier, right? And however many people are watching us on TV tonight will know that, however we vote on this policy. But it just, it just is something that I think we should think about, whether there's a way to communicate that we're reverting back to what our policy actually says.
I do want to say consistency was a concern for me. And I did reach out to another Madam Chair in our community. I reached out to city council to see what their practice was. They do not read anything into the record. It's sent in a packet. And often, you know, the city clerk will print out and have available for members. If they hadn't checked their email before they walked in, they have those packets of, of communications. We still have the communications item on our agenda. And that is an opportunity for members to bring topics to the table that weren't necessarily brought directly from a resident or a community member. There's another part of our policy that we haven't put into practice that's in writing that says we limit public comment to 20 minutes in our regular meetings. We've always welcomed more voices at our table. City council obviously has a sign-up procedure for the regular meeting for three slots.
It's five.
Oh, it's five now?
Used to be three fives.
Used to be five, okay.
Now it's five threes.
Five, three-minute slots, okay. And then, you know, just to add to that, for public hearings, there's actually a pretty prescribed Mass General Law about that. And for public hearings, you need to keep open, after publishing it and providing written materials and giving a presentation, you need to keep it open until all are heard. And if it's not practical in one evening, you have to reschedule your meeting for another night. And so there's a distinction between public hearings and our regular meetings where we have the opportunity.
Public comment.
Public comment, yes. And so I, I, to get back to the consistency point, I think we did it because of COVID, and we probably should have discontinued it sooner. But we've always encouraged people to come and express their voice and opinions. So that's where we're at. And it is inconsistent, but it hasn't been used in any number of meetings recently.
And so I'm wishing to ask our body to consider if there's a way that we can put something somewhere to announce this change in practice to align our practices with what's written in our policies. Maybe it's a little blurb on the website. Maybe it's sneaks into a superintendent update. I, I don't know. I just, I just think that we are not the best at communicating. And when we change something, the human reaction to change is not usually good. So that, just my two cents worth, I'm ready to move the question.
Okay. Okay, can I take a couple more comments? Okay, Ms. Robinson?
Remind me, so we have decided we are going to go back to that? Or we are still discussing?
Well, by re-accepting our policies as written, we would be going back to that. So the policy as written is that emails come to the body, but they're not read into the record. Our policy also says that we limit it to 20 minutes, but it also says it's up to the chair to decide.
So can we have further discussion on whether we want to? We want to go back to...
The ask at our last meeting was you have to bring revised language if you want to... You had homework, Ms. Robinson.
Too much homework.
And I, I, yeah, I don't know if anyone brought any revisions to the current policy. As chair, someone who's served on policy before and after having a conversation with our, you know, city council president, I think to be consistent in our community, following our policies with just the edits that have been track changed for changing things like citizens, residents, and pronouns. And there was one other thing that we changed. Oh, we added the, the public comment. This is from Beverly. It's not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee authority. So these policies speak about the fact that they're speaking through the chair, that they're not engaging in a conversation. Dr. McKenzie de Franza? And then Mayor Cahill?
Sure, I just have a clarifying question. So it does not prevent us from sharing citizen concerns or feedback as a matter of providing a summary to the body, though?
Right, that would be under communications from school committee members.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Cahill?
Thanks. So since our policy has not, at any point along the way, really provided for the reading of emails, and I think to Mrs. Visnick's point of some people may not know until they try, maybe the easiest thing to do, or maybe the most effective, would be if those emails come to the president directly or through Donna, that maybe the response is, well, the policy has always been, or the policy is that they won't be read, but they have been forwarded on and shared with every other committee member who have the opportunity to read them ahead of, during, you know, before taking any action on the, the matter at hand. If, in fact, it's part of a public hearing that they're reaching out. So I, I guess that would be a way to kind of communicate back that we are all seeing and getting the... seeing, and getting the chance to hear them through our own ability to read what they've sent.
And I, I think there is a reply that automatically sent, if they send it to our school committee account, just talking about how we can't reply, or can't all reply. Um, I will work with Ms. Bergeron on that response, to make sure that we're explaining our policy, and that it has been shared. Okay. Um, I will make the motion, if nobody wants to make an alternative motion, that we adopt the packet of policies that we have for our second reading as marked.
Okay.
This evening. Thank you. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Six zero, thank you. Ms. Bergeron, I gave you the word versions of those two, but we'll figure out getting it up on the, okay. And next, um, upcoming meetings and dates. Thank you, everyone, for allowing this meeting to go a little long, so we could squeeze everything in. The committee of the whole meeting and the finance and facilities that were scheduled for the end of the month are canceled. And again, send me some availability for, towards the end of July, August, for a retreat with Dr. Cushing, and any topics that you might think are appropriate. Next, I'd like to ask Ms. Viznick, in our committee of the whole, you sort of gave half of the FNF report, if you'd like to, uh.
I did, I was so excited to, this evening, say that I didn't, I did my report last meeting. Uh, very quickly, uh, standing committee on finance and facilities last met on May twenty-eighth, and in my opinion, the big takeaway from that, we had our transportation director, and we have entered into an agreement with, uh, via NEC, for a consolidation of our out-of-district special education bus routes, and so we will hope that, that, uh, if we're sending a child to school XYZ, and so too is PBD, both those children can be on one, uh, mini-bus, and we'll save money. That's a great thing. Um, in your packets, there are three policies for a first reading, um, one on student transportation in private vehicles, um, one on anti-idling, although it's, I think, spelled incorrectly on this, on, on our agenda, and one about food service. Um, we, we'll, I guess we'll vote on those in the fall. And, um, the Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities recommends the approval of the attached April twenty-twenty-five Gifts to Schools totaling twenty with gratitude, twenty-three thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and seventy cents. Uh, that, that's my motion.
So moved.
About a second.
Second.
Thanks. And the, the bulk of that money, and I should say, the bulk of that money came from BEV Ed, and, and we, we had them here earlier this evening, and, um, I have served on BEV Ed for a number of years, and can send, continue to serve as a non-voting member, and it's just my favorite thing to see all the grants come in, and see the wonderful teachers, and educators, and PTO members who submit grants. It's just an absolutely fabulous thing. So, please, can we, please not say no to this free money.
What's that?
Was that the same evening?
Oh, yes, we're still here.
No kidding, right?
We're still here.
Feels like forever ago.
Um, I echo with gratitude. All those in favor? Six zero, thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, in your packet, there were two budget transfers, number one, numbers one three nine two and one three nine six. Standing Committee on Finance and Facilities, this is my motion, I recommend that we approve the attached, uh, set of budget transfers thirteen ninety-two and thirteen ninety-six.
Second. All those in favor? Six zero.
We are next scheduled to meet in the fall.
Thanks. Um, Dr. McKenzie de Franza, do you want to do a brief, brief recap? Thanks.
I will give a very brief recap, but thank you, Dr. Trochik, for getting us through our votes on the recommended, um, curriculum, uh, discussion. So, um, just really briefly, we did hear from all of our principals on their school improvement plans, which was really important. We heard the highlights, and we definitely had some good takeaways from MCAS performance, um, from last year, that I thought was really important and, um, encouraging. Uh, we do have the summer reading website up, so I want to push that to all the parents and family members and caregivers listening. Um, a good takeaway was that only two to three hours a week will prevent summer learning loss, really important. We approved handbook changes. Um, we also talked about some of the common goals of culturally responsive teaching and inclusive schools, and of course, looking at our, um, attendance, uh, goals that we have across the district. There is a new AIM program at AIR, so I thought that was really, um, important to mention. Also, just some really innovative, uh, programming around being inclusive, um, including, uh, the Best Buddies Program, which I learned more about, uh, which is a partnership between student with a disability and one without, um, to ensure that they partner and create friendship and relationships. Um, this is coming to the fourth grade. Um, also, we heard a little bit more about, um, how the first year went for Ms. Twombly, which seemed to be really great. She is doing some good work there. Um, and we also talked a little bit about the preserving democracy course, which was, uh, piloted at the high school. It will be continuing and having another section next year. We've increased our AP, uh, taking, um, which also resulted in an award to the high school, uh, so was really, uh, happy to hear that. Um, and aside from that, we've already adopted the new curriculum, which we talked about, for some resources for culinary, uh, wellness, and we will be piloting that wellness curriculum at the middle school because of the vote we took this evening. Um, so thank you, everyone, and hopefully that wasn't too quick, but I hope that, uh, you got some good highlights.
And we always can thank our friends at BEV Cam if you want.
Thank you so much.
To watch those, um, school improvement plans, and.
We had a split meeting, so, um, we did start at six PM tonight, and we continued in the, um, second portion this evening, but I want to thank everyone for their patience with that, um, and, um, we'll be meeting in the fall.
Yeah, sounds good. Uh, the negotiating subcommittee has not met since our last meeting, and we do not have any planned meetings of the subcommittee for negotiations.
Same for policy.
Okay.
With fingers crossed.
Are there any communication school members, school committee members wish to bring to the table that they have not yet already forwarded on to the superintendent? Ms. Viznick?
Just want to say very quickly, um, I think you all got an email, um, uh, from a, a, a student who was very concerned about, um, the fees that we charge, and they were worried that some fellow students were not able to participate. And so I, as the chair of FNF authored, um, per, per Ms. Rachel Abel's request, authored a response to that student, and at first, I just think it's really cool that, that the student took the initiative to do that. And second, I just want to take this opportunity to remind everybody, we do have scholarships for pretty much everything, everything in the school district, and, um, they're based on whether you would get free or reduced lunch. And right now, everybody gets free lunch, so that's a little bit of a trick question there, but, uh, federal poverty levels are what we use to determine our levels of scholarship, and, and we don't ever want anyone to not participate because of their inability to pay. Um, so even if you quote-unquote "make too much money," there are even special con, considerations. So if you have something happening in your life that is, uh, you know, a hardship, uh, we would consider that as well. So we hope that more children, um, choose to participate, and money should not be a barrier.
Thank you, and as the committee saw, we had another civically-minded eighth grader email. Uh, as chair, I did respond on our behalf, and pointed, um, James, two policies that we have about the use of technology in the classroom. He brought some great suggestions. I hope that he looks at the resources and understands that we already have, as part of our policy and our procedures, some of those safeguards that he was hoping could be in place for his peers. Ms. Robinson?
So, um, I also, we all received these emails, which I think are great. They were very well-written as well. Um, so when these, just as a matter of, like, protocol, like, can we all respond to these?
We shouldn't respond when they send it to all of us if it's a matter before the board. Um, open meeting law requires that any discussion amongst us. Um, our policy has it that the chair is the communicator. I respond on the, the committee's behalf, and in this case, I asked Finance and Facility Chair to take one of them, I took the other. Um, but generally, if you individually want to create a response, that's fine, but don't create a serial communication back to any of us.
Yeah, or just with the new email address, it seems like it goes back to everyone. So I, I've been leery of, like, just, I'll just send something.
Yes, you shouldn't reply all to those messages.
Right.
I put, in some cases, us in blind copy, so that it isn't inadvertently reply all. Um, but in that case, I wanted to make sure everyone understood the chairs had addressed the, the civically-minded, I think it's part of their civics.
Yeah, and I think it's just important that we, you know, we, we acknowledge that we're listening and paying attention to what our students have to say.
Yes, absolutely. Were there any other communications that needed to be brought to the table? Seeing none, the chair is making a motion now to vote to meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, for Purpose Seven and Three, and not to return to open session. Purpose Seven is to review and approve the executive session minutes from our executive session meetings of April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, and May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, and for Purpose Three, discuss strategy with respect to and preparation for collective bargaining with units A, B, and C, and/or any individual contracts, because an open discussion may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. Again, this is not to return to open session. We have a motion and a second. I do need to call the role, Mayor Cahill.
Yes.
Kim Quelo.
Yes.
Kenan McKenzie de Franza.
Yes.
Karen Robinson.
Yes.
Jeffrey Silva is absent.
Lurinda Viznick.
Yes.
And Rachel Abel, yes. Okay, the chair restates that we are now moving into executive session, and we will not return to open session. The time is ten oh two PM, and I appreciate everyone being with us for five or ten more minutes. Thank you, BEV Cam. Thank you, everyone at home that stuck with us.